First order of business is puzzle allegiance if everyone could join us. Daniel will join us. Thank you. The next order of business is the um reading of the remote. Good evening and welcome, everybody. As a preliminary matter, this is the um this is the mained select board. I am the chair Krista Silva. And permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda of president can hear me. I don't have to do that tonight because everybody we anticipate is in the room. Yes, yeah, so good evening. This open meeting is being conducted live by Zoom as a hybrid meeting. And speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely. And the chair or meeting manager may allow for public the public to provide comment. The select board would like to hear public comments, and if there is further action that is required by the board chair. Will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may, if they are able within the confines of the open meeting law. Respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public. The meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to individual attendees. Unless otherwise required by law. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you. So please take care not to screen share your computer as anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the meeting minutes for this evening are on board docs. And um so if you'd like, follow along the agenda that's posted on board docs. We're not going to turn to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business. And to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Also, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any responses, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name and address before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comments. After the members of the board have spoken. We may afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify themselves by their name and address. And once we have a list of all public commentators, we will call on each by their name and afford three minutes for each comments. Public comment for public hearings will only be accepted in person per open meeting law, and we do have a public hearing this evening. So moving on to the first matter of business, do we have any public comments this evening in the room? Okay, any public comments online? Julian?
Uh hello, uh this is Gillian Prendergast. I am uh chair of the finance committee. Uh I just wanted to ask um Mr. Chair if tonight any of the topic will involve um posting for the joint budget meeting on Saturday.
Oh, like if you want to talk about the, sorry Jill, you mean like if you want to talk about the agenda itself?
Um I was hoping just to touch base with you all. I've been getting um emails to my town um. Inbox asking if we're gonna hold that meeting this week or not. Um and I'm just wondering, I, okay, so uh. It I'm just basically wondering, is that something I'm supposed to post or what the procedure is? My first year being chair.
So each of us, each of us as chairs. Have to either have ourselves or our clerk, someone within our committee, host our own meeting. So Greg. Or Greg, one of the two Gregs will likely post for the select board. And will also post. Yeah, will you post for FinCom as well?
I can post for both. So so Jill, I'm sorry, I just need this afternoon. Here's what it said.
Ah, okay, sorry, I didn't see it.
No, no, it's okay. That because you'd asked this question. So um. One agenda can be posted for multiple bodies. You can set the list of devices, a joint meeting in this case of the select board and finance. But um minutes have to be posted separately per individual body. So uh that's why I've been trying to get on the same page with you and. There so to make sure the agenda is what you both want. And then and however you deliberate that if you maybe had a conversation amongst your finance committee separately. First have one server however, and then eventually the agenda is sort of made to my office and we. So um and um and so I think I have a good draft right now. You'll see it again. I just sent it to you again uh and then let me know what you think. We'll post it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I I wasn't gonna talk about it myself until the very end of our meeting when we get to the um. You know, our our new business chair notes, member notes, and my two my two. So that would be kind of could be kind of late, but um and the only two, the only two items that concern that I had were gonna be what was um. What does our statement look like, the select board, because we are on the agenda as making a statement at some point? And then the other part of that was gonna be, um I don't know if you got my email, if you didn't get Greg's about the um. Participation remotely that I'm I am suggesting there is no remote participation. It would be aired, but there would be no remote participation. Given that it is in. It's not necessarily posted as a hearing, but it isn't, uh you know, a meeting um. Similar to a hearing in certain ways, I was gonna not allow public comments from Zoom. Just in that, in my opinion, it's a matter of saving time. So we haven't talked about that yet. We'll talk to that about at the end.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, moving on to item number four on the agenda, the consent agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion on the consent agenda this evening?
Uh consent agenda items A through E as presented, contingent upon adhering to all federal. State and local public health and safety guidance. Otherwise, in use of digital signatures.
Sorry, wait, second.
Um any conversation in regards to any of the um consent items tonight?
Um I well, I appreciate it. The here for the Tree City at the nation, Linda for the jazz festival, yes, okay, um. And the art walk.
I think um I think Miss Christmas Parade is online.
And Jen is online for, so we we do it even though that we've made these things content agenda to help with the business of, you know. Business of town running a little bit more efficiently. We absolutely appreciate the work that you do and the time that you take to come in person. Or or online and to log in to let us know um if there's any changes um or. You know, we really appreciate the work that you do uh so to help support the town. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
And Steve, right? Yes, Steve.
All right. Uh any further comments about the four, five items? All right, all those in favor? We get to raise our hands. We have to read our hands um because we're not coming. All right.
Yeah, I'm looking forward.
Thanks, thanks, Dan. Dan, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I always love just to say thank you to everybody who helped not only make the um the parade day go fabulous. But also we had, you know, such an issue trying to reschedule everything. And um one person in particular, um Lieutenant Cushing, he was such a doll. He was so sweet and. You know, helping thinking about days and dates and um he was so wonderful that day when I went in there. Um all of the officers were so wonderful and um Chief Noble, the DPW, Joe Foster for the DPW. Um they were all wonderful and of course the people that I work with this, we're growing in size now. We have nine people who are um committee members and everybody was wonderful with. The parade day and making sure it went perfect. There was not one car that got onto the parade route, which was incredible with the Main and Police Department. They were so great. And um and all the volunteers, everybody was wonderful. So I just like to always say thank you and thank you to Krista Silva, who always. Is so sweet and generous and provides the insurance for parade day for us.
You're welcome. Yeah, all right. Um so we have a public hearing at seven fifteen.
That's due number twelve for our sponsor.
No, um let's, well, is we could, we can do the next two, item sixes, that those people are here. Well, the two licensing issues shouldn't take us more than five minutes.
Fine, okay.
Yeah, all right. Um first up, used car license, used car sales class two license, Vipex LLC, seven six eight, Potomac Road. You're in the front row now. All right, would it would someone like to make a motion and then we'll get to the questions that we might have?
I'll move to accept and approve the secondhand motor vehicle license by Vipex LLC at seventy six eight Potomac Road and authorize you to do the signatures.
Okay, all right, um I don't like to be in the habit of butchering people's names. Could you still, could you pronounce your first and last name for it?
Owner.
Owner? Okay, what's your last name?
Beechuk.
Owner Beechuk, okay, owner. Um is this a new license? Or renewal?
Senior.
New? Okay, um does anybody have any questions for owner? Only the owner.
Well, go ahead, go ahead. Um no, I well, I just it's actually not for you, owner. It's more um for Greg as far as, so the feedback is applicant is in touch with municipal services.
Yeah.
For for why?
For the planning board specifically, uh do you, have you been to the planning board yet?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good. That's what it was. We we wanna, I I got that feedback that he had, I mean, when we were with the agenda last week.
So do do we have an issue or uh no?
Actually, could you tell us the result of the planning board meeting?
Oh, the issue was yesterday, I talked to the general on stage. Um he's on the lot, I just show some of his. And he's on the lot, he just wanted to be specific what's the usage of the area, this is the. Uh the script upon the word and this uh spaces like it's been.
Okay, in the red square, yeah.
And it's gonna be, and because of on the backside of the property, it's like river right there, they said, does this area, there wasn't. There was a pave, so we couldn't just park fire, but that's not. Kind of true, but it's been updated, it's been paved area.
Okay.
And it's not that close to the river anyway, so.
Okay, so so you you essentially bought the business that exists. The business, the business is there now, there's a there's a cardio there now.
I've been there like for three years, we just changing the ownership right now.
Yeah, okay.
You know, right, I think I think my interpretation, either describing sort of like the change in use of the property, not that it's taken over. Which just to compliance with so many law, as opposed to what you're being asked to consider, which is the license itself.
Okay.
So that you said change in use of, so was there a change in?
No, it's not.
So does anybody have any other questions for?
Our friend. No, but we have the planning director and a member of the planning board present, anything from the meeting last night that.
Any concerns on um the car dealership at seventy six eight Potomac?
There the um we met with. It's going to be uh attending a planning committee to facilitate training for the special firm.
Okay. So there's no, there's no overriding concerns?
No.
Okay.
I'm just curious, was there discussion on the impact, if any, on the whole uh Potomac Road? Development uh issue, was that at all discussed?
Not, no, it's currently operating business and um just our concern. They were concerned that uh on proximity to the river and where, and we've already discussed it uh yesterday. And they became to a uh. Uh arrangement that will work for everybody.
Yeah.
But so far incorporated into the power.
Okay, it's probably out of, it's probably out of bounds on the issue of the corridor, but um. You know, I just want to make to any new business, any new owner that comes in is aware of the plan and where.
Right, no, I.
There's no surprises when it's a what? What do you mean?
Right.
All right.
Good point.
And I just had one other question was um as far as the vehicles, you mentioned about forty five vehicle. Maximum forty five vehicles at one time, and I lost track from when this business were opened. Is that what was licensed for before or does anyone have?
I don't know what the numbers are.
And if you're licensed, this must be that uh the limit for the vehicles has been stored.
Okay.
But um you know, again, in a comfortable zone, you can fit the forty to fifty vehicles. It's very comfortably, not bothering anybody.
Okay.
So it's just changing the um. Just a tenant, but it's been for three years. Business, yeah, and all the thing it's gonna be staying is true, it's what it's been right now.
Yeah.
Oh, we're not doing any operation on the. In the building or the garage, I think it's gonna be the same.
Yes.
Before, so just changing their ownership.
Okay.
And I've been there for three years.
Appreciate that. I was more, because I feel like, I feel like over the years, there have become more and more and more cars there. So I was just curious if there had ever been a limit or um, okay, perfect.
All right, any other questions? Do we have a, we had a motion? Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, both.
We had both, all those in favor. Good luck. Good luck with the planning board. Those guys are awful. All right, so let's um, let's do the uh rooming house and keepers and then we'll go into the public hearing.
Yeah.
Saviano, you guys are up. Um, does anybody want to make a motion?
Before we do, uh is this, is this at all related to the rooming house concussion themselves?
Yeah, so does anybody want to make a motion as listed on this one?
I will move to accept and approve the rooming house in keepers license for G and D Saviano Realty Trust. At one thirty one dash one thirty seven Main Street, authorized to do the signatures if approved.
All right, so. Everything good?
I would say, yeah, I mean, I to give compliments, of course, in Saviano's for being um. Responsible, you know, in the last week, especially maybe two weeks. And um so thank you, and so therefore they review that sort of satisfied various town offices to allow them to live for the life.
Okay. Do we do a motion?
We did, and seconded.
All right, do we have any discusses? Anyone have any questions? No questions?
Hopefully, hopefully, uh it, you know, moving forward, we we won't, we wouldn't have to do this um. Because I I we, I I personally hate it having to do it, so um hopefully this is the beginning of that. Thank you very much.
All right, so no other questions, complaints? Uh I'm not gonna vote, because I didn't vote before, so all those in favor? Okay, thanks, guys. All right, now we will open um, we'll open a public hearing. For EverSource for a pole installation on Main Street. I will read the uh public notice. And the public notice reads, notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law, chapter one sixty six. That a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February sixth, two thousand twenty four at seven fifteen P M. Via hybrid meeting, both in person at one ninety five Main Street, Maynard Mass. And remotely via Zoom for the posted maintenance select board meeting agendas instructions. The petition and plan are being presented by the N Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy. For the purpose of obtaining a grant of location to install one stub pole. At number fifty seven dash fifteen dash two dash S. And install one anchor on Main Street, Maynard. A copy of this petition is on file with the town clerk and select board office. Would anybody like to read the motion?
Uh, here. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, uh if I could find it.
Yeah, I will move to approve the grant of a gate install one stub pole number fifty seven slash fifteen dash two dash S. And one anchor guy at pole fifty seven slash fifteen dash two S on Main Street, Maynard. The petition and plan is being presented by the N Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy. For the purpose of obtaining a granted location and authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Okay, um discussion.
So this is all for the link to Main Street um, which is type of the topic even at the last annual time, being to approve the easement agreement. Though the the authority of the select board is certain, we have not got to that point yet with the developer, which is McDonald's development. Um but you all are familiar with the overall scheme, which is either their construction misses. Um to move the pole away from Main Street and then back alongside the proposed building. Uh which should allow for for the for the building itself to be developed. But we're also looking forward to the collaboration with McDonald's Development because we're looking to have the easement to go from Main Street to the road trail so long time. Um and it's all sort of aligned with that plan. Um I really also want to give a lot of credit to uh the OMS team. And and U W, whatever else has been involved and tried to collaborate with EverSource. To get us to this point and having this agreed along, um the developer has really been. Strongly um um requesting uh partnership with the town hall to get this to where we are. And I think we are joined by someone from Griggs. Yeah, it's, Griggs, we've heard from before. Chris, are you, are you from EverSource? Chris Cosby, are you with us?
Yes, this is Christine Cosby from EverSource.
Hi Christine. How are you?
Good, how are you?
We're good. Um, I don't, I don't, does anybody have any questions um for Christine in regards to this pole and this this um anchor guy?
I just want to confirm what what we're looking at. So this is, I think we figured it out, but it's. It's behind the building of one fifteen Maine in the parking lot of what is the C V S, is that correct? Or what was, or the town of Maynard parking lot?
It will be, so right now it's closer to the the Main Street. Um and so the idea is to move it back away from.
Okay, okay, so.
Yeah, but the stub pole is adjacent to the rail trail. And the anchor is the anchor, the support pole is already on Main Street. It's to remove the middle pole on. And it's gonna have to be increased and length, so it's gonna be increased inside and will pull up it, the stub holds it now. They live up, there you go.
All right, I had it.
No, no loss parking in that. No, right in the green area, there's already a car there, a pole there, the stub pole is um a support pole and back that pole. Okay.
Okay. Um, anybody have any other questions about the pole? Is anybody online or anybody in the room, this is a public hearing, who would like to comment or ask any questions regarding the pole? Suggested for Main Street? Seeing no questions in the room and no questions on the line, um like to take the vote, all those in favor? Okay.
Um, uh, public hearing needs to be real tall.
Oh, you're right.
All right, all those in favor? Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yes, thank you, David. Um, uh would anybody like to make a motion to close the public hearing at seven twenty four P M?
I will move to close the public hearing at seven twenty four P M.
Second.
All those in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yes, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay, so this was approved?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you so much.
Um next up would seems to be the planning board.
Again. Thinking as a regular occurrence.
Planning team?
Get back in two weeks.
I'm just gonna have like standing, the standing agenda.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Chris, I'm here to play with Phil, I'm your planning director.
What do you, what are the pleasure?
The uh purpose of tonight's uh visit is to request another. Referral of a zoning bylaw back to the planning board. Uh this particular bylaw, in all fairness, probably that could have had this with the original, but it was not ready. The original referral for uh firearms bylaw. Um what this is, is strictly adding um. Maybe changes to the use tables presented in my memorandum dated January thirtieth. Uh the big change, I think, since we um. Originally discussed this, no, I can't remember if we had outdoor shooting ranges. As the use listed. In this, we did put. Shooting, outdoor shooting ranges didn't put a specific purpose of prohibiting that. That was just to make it clear.
Okay, what? Before, what effect, if any, does that have on the Ryan Gun Club?
They're, they're.
They're there.
That's correct, and that was, that was part of the reason why we did it like this. If you recall, the earlier um. Amendments that you referred already to the planning board.
Yeah.
They specifically exempted the existing line and gun club.
Right.
And um we'd be unaffected by any of these changes.
Right, I know that, I just want to mention this there. Thank you. Go, go ahead, finish that.
Well, um it just, it simply regulates uh what we, what was uh written in text in my previous um. Articles. Uh and it. A distinction between the shooting range and firearms business. Uh and um indoor shooting ranges are permitted uh by a special permit of the planning board. As our firearms ranges uh in the business district. The central business district. The H C I, the mill. Our industrial and our industrial districts. And that's all by special permit. It's uh basically just putting in table form everything we've brought.
When you um, when you, so if somebody gets to the point where they have an indoor range or whatever, um. Who, who regulates what that has to look like? Safety wise and everything else, do we or do the state, how is that regulated?
I believe uh it starts with, I think, OSHA. This is where, because there was a question raised about potential um fumes and contaminants that may be. Present, and we researched that with our health department. Uh we went all the way out looking for that and uh the answer to that question. And it turned out to be OSHA in that case. So I assume for anything that was health related, any other health related issues, it would be. Um regulated through those.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else have questions for? Planning board?
We're just adding that.
This way.
This, this, we're adding this and referring it back to you, okay? Um, okay.
We will move to refer to the draft zoning bylaw amendments to the planning board as presented in the planning director's member to the town administrator. Dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty four for public hearings.
Okay, um, any further questions, conversation? All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. It's been seen a couple of weeks.
All right, now we are on to item number eight, which the, is the cultural district enhancement fund. The summer street, she, there were street shade tree planting.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. Steve Smith, Brian Steve, Fort and Maynard. Um the chairman of the tree committee in town. And we're coming before you to ask that you approve our application for the C D E F grant. For additional plantings um along Summer Street. Um both uh two in Memorial Park and three along the Health Strip across from the movie theater. Along with an additional twenty five native shrubs. Um our idea is to carry um. Carry out additional um plantings in line with what we did last year in the two islands in the parking lot. And kind of kind of move that theme out. Home size of bullseye using those center island, that's kind of our, our starting point.
The only question I have um is, I know you've been coordinating with um K P W on this also. Um the two questions would be the maintenance of, I know one of those called creeping juniper. Want to make sure it's in control.
Yeah.
Um and then the other question is actually about the trees themselves. I noticed, um you know, they, I think they're fairly smaller. Trees that you're considering.
Yeah.
Um on the, on the photo, it looks like they grow into the trees. So obviously, I just want to make sure that you, whatever you're planting. You're planting with the plan that it's not going to grow up into the life.
Yes, yeah, we're definitely um have taken that into consideration and we consider um choosing trees like choosing fruit too. So although we've listed out species, when we go to the nursery, we always look for the best possible plants that we can get, so.
Yeah.
But yes, that's a, that was a big consideration of ours, which was the final.
So the shrubs are gonna go in the, that little triangle?
Uh actually, in the health strip on either side of the plants, the. Uh, actually, in the health strip on either side of the plants, the idea being keeping kind of the mowers away from the base of um, the plants.
Okay, so they're gonna go in between the trees?
Yeah, basically.
In and around the trees. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I just. I see the, I see the trees. I see the arrows of the trees. I just don't see that. Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks.
Uh, I just have one question.
Sure.
Um, how do you prioritize this project over what I suspect that probably many others uh, around maintenance that? That you you view? I'm just curious to know a little bit about that um, process, how you, how you come to make this select.
Well, our, our original plantings involve creating the downtown arborita. And we feel like this is an extension of that, right? So all these trees are still. Kind of within the same area, um, and they'll have the same criteria. So we'll tag them, um, we'll use them for education. Um, all part of that same kind of process as we began with with the trees and the, and the tree pits down coming on the sidewalk.
Thank you.
I'm afraid to ask if you've read our tree resource management plan because I'm afraid if you do, you'll just give Justin a lot of corrections to make that. But. Have you read the tree resource management plan?
Yes, and so, and um, we also um, understand. How many trees have been taken down over the last couple of years and how many the tree committee, tree corps have moved ahead and planted. So. Roughly, there's about seventy trees that have been removed in town in the last few years and um, between the tree committee and the tree corps, we've planted. Back over twenty five trees. Including the one we put for Arbor Day on front of the town.
Yeah.
We are doing um, some more outreach outreach to our Arbor Day planting this year will be out in the um. Economic justice area at the. As long as everything goes well at the uh, low income apartments on Powder Mill. So we've targeted a location out there and are working with them currently to. To get a tree and four Arbor Day this year.
Great, um, anybody else have any questions? There's still make, make a motion.
I'll.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the use of six thousand dollars in the cultural district enhancement fund C D F by the mayor treatment committee for the proposed. Summer Street cage tree plantings project as presented and authorized the use of digital signatures that approved.
Again.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for helping the trees.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. We have a couple of contracts from the D B W to this stuff.
Hello.
Hey, Justin.
Hello.
Good evening.
Been a while.
It has, because you've been bombarded with the agenda items coming your way.
Okay, all right, um. So what are the two? Items to be bombarding us tonight?
What do you have?
We have the associated construction company, WOLP, for a project change order.
Yeah.
Six thousand dollars.
Yes, uh, somewhat self-explanatory, but it's all leading back to our for a uh, treatment plant um. Phase one project. Uh, we're wrapping up. We're at about ninety percent completion, um, which is a great sign. But it also comes with a lot of what I refer to as punchless items in a very dynamic nature. So we're gonna come to a screeching halt because we're still waiting on the E P's final approval of all our integrated systems. And we're working through pins and design. Uh, so you'll see some change orders consistently come across, put in a much smaller capacity. That we've seen a six thousand dollar payment order. We'll start to wrap up these projects, these change orders um. As listed are minor issues that. Um, are part of the original design, but they may be overlooked such as an apron to the gate system behind Alstead. That just allows for the gate's longevity um, and integration into the well site with all the major private property into the public property realm. Um, you may see some change orders again in the future of minor consequence of ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars in regards to some of the um. Upgrades. Based on the fact that we're modifying an existing plant to handle new technology. So that integration, you can design it the best you can, but sometimes you have to work off the bugs as it's actually built. Uh, but this is a simple thing, go to request of six thousand dollars.
And the funding for the change order?
The funding is well within our bet, our bond limits and our balance sheet for this entire project. We're actually anticipating that we may be below. The overall project's bond capability by about two hundred dollars.
I'm talking about. Watching to.
Yeah, we actually had a really good efficient projects. Um, again, you'll see, you'll still see some change orders come through until we're hundred percent. There's also some uncontrollable, E P pre-approves our entire plan. But they have final approval and a lot of times, once they do a pre-approval, they decide during final approval that they want. Um, so there may be some major change orders, but we can anticipate that at, at this point in terms of E P. We are waiting now, this is actually three months and we've been um, emailing the E P with any um, confirmation or. Conditions or questions that they have. It's actually been radio science for three months, which is kind of uncommon. If you're unaware, the E P is going through a major retirement cost um, in regards to the public drinking water utility in which they're alone. Um, we actually received three emails from major reps of ours that they retired.
And there's no, I think we've probably spoken about this before, Justin, but there's, so obviously, the original word of contract value was, was X. The total contract value is, is Y and it's, and it's. Creeping up. You know, it's like a half a million more than it, than it was before. Is, is there a percentage? Of an increase that's a concern when it comes to procurement or is that not? Okay.
And this is, remember, this is two periods contract. So associated is towards the end. That's why you're seeing six thousand. They're actually phase one. They were mostly the field. So they were a lot of the well drilling and all of that process, the lateral boring under the river. This is why you're seeing a pavement, five thousand dollar uh, change order. They're actually, they're, they have substantial completion. Phase one part of this entire project associated will be phased out in the next month or two. They have substantial completion. Winston is on the backend, which they're doing a majority of the modification integration in the treatment plant. Yep, and that's the one that's the larger contract. And again, each contract is a twenty five thousand, uh, thirty five percent cap.
Okay.
Okay. And that's that cabinet, stable. Yeah.
Would anybody like to make a motion in regards to change order five?
The worst part of all that is because it's general law, every contractor knows it. So you have to anticipate change orders. It's just one of those kind of corrupt.
All right, I will go.
Go ahead.
I will move to approve change order five, T C O. Zero zero eight with the associated construction company for the well for a water treatment plant upgrade, phase one construction. Phase one construction contract number one, three, six, one, in the amount of five thousand nine hundred thirty eight dollars and eighty seven cents presented offering. Digital signatures to the first.
All right, the motion is made. Any further conversation? All right, all those in favor? Okay, thank you, Justin. Um, can you lead us through? The next one.
All right, so the next one is, um, is actually a great situation for the town manager. We were able to uh, receive an earmark. In two thousand twenty two with the help of Kate Hogan as part of an overall larger earmark process. There was a three, there was three projects identified within the four hundred and ten thousand dollar earmark. And one of them was a feasibility study for the public works facility. The other two were the stormwater improvements on Main Street and um, wastewater treatment plant security fencing. So just kind of go through three, even though this one's in front of you now, the wastewater treatment plant's security fencing is one hundred percent complete. Um, the Main Street stormwater project is nearing ninety nine percent completion and design development, which will be on your. Palette or on your plate, hopefully in the next uh, few agendas. For the conversation of balance uh, of budgeting and I will move that project forward, very similar to the Concord Act and A's intersection improvement. And this is the third project. The reason we did it in progression is because this project always had a funding gap. So we're able to recently resolve that funding gap with some excess ARPA funds localized that may be reallocated to support this project. Uh, so a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of this um, scope is from the original award and the fifty thousand dollars. To make up the difference roughly, that's forty nine thousand fifty dollars to make up the difference is localized ARPA funds that were utilized. For uh, a different process. So um, as part of that, we're looking at a hundred ninety nine thousand fifty dollar feasibility study. Which will conduct a comprehensive study of the town's D B W uh, garage facility. Um, meeting both federal, state and local uh, guidelines and looking at our operational abilities, logistic locations. Working against master, what working with master plan, hazard mitigation plan, M V P process and what that looks like as a whole. And then that comprehensive study will be presented to the board for potential next auction. Um, if you're not aware, the D B W garage is well beyond its useful life. Um, our roof of the D B W garage is actually rated the worst roof in any facility we have in the entire town, including the golf course. Um, it, there's a difference between why we concentrate a lot, or at least the D B W facilities directly concentrates a lot on the um. On the golf course uh, route is because it houses um, significant amount of personnel versus our garage. Which houses equipment. Doesn't mean one's less important than the other. It's just when you're talking public safety. Obviously, we don't want loss of life. We can manage loss of equipment. Um, if you're also unaware, the D B W garage is the only fueling location within the town. So it is our only fueling station for police, fire and D P W. It is in a flood zone. And it is um, a situation that could potentially impact that river severely. And thirdly, the garage is made up of previous existing facilities that have been retrofitted over the course of hundred, two hundred years. One of those being the water pump house, which was recently our water um. Operations facility, which has been condemned due to structural failures. So there is a facility that we had to re-modify, which is our old harbor treatment plant, and we house our water and sewer staff there out of a.
Quick question. Uh. Looking ahead, assuming that a feasibility study goes through or begins or whatever. Uh, a, a proposed building. Assuming that that's what's out on the horizon somewhere. Um. How is that funded? Is that funded through? General fund?
We haven't done that yet.
Or, or is that? Or is that, but that's not a water and sewer in um.
Can you use enterprise funds?
Uh, not very. It would be, so it depends. So part of it is the feasibility study of, do we modify the existing? Uh, areas or do we look at alternative sites? That's listed in the scope. So.
That's enough because we're gonna talk about it, but then the next question is, is it on the capital plan?
Yeah, this year. I, I submitted.
This year.
Yeah. They're aware of the conditions of the, of this, the capital planning committees. They visit each other.
Because that, you know, this is another part for Saturday, we have a discussion when uh, we're talking about bleachers and we're talking about a senior center. And we're talking about a, a building like this. Once again. It's, it's not sustainable.
I worked very hard with John Markin, and again, John, John will relate this, but I'll let you know, this year alone, I put in fifty. Four capital requests total. Uh, I could put in a hundred. So it's, this was one of the first few that they're really moving towards um. Clear up and the transparent outlook of what that looks like, the forecasting model. So we work very hard to kind of um. Collaborate and efficiently, if we put out what it looks like. The D P W has actually been putting in capital requests for these facilities. It's just roof repair, roof replacement, structural support. At this point, those haven't come to fruition over ten years. So now we're at a point, we have to look at the.
And I get that. I think though, my point is that it's got to become more um. Everybody needs to become more aware of it, including the school committee, the finance committee, senior center focus group, the uh, board selectmen.
So that's what, yeah, that's what the feasibility study will allow. It's a real hard analytical, comprehensive document that proves what's, what, what's not. Or what are the options?
Presumably, it's not a cheap project.
Correct. It's most likely very similar to what you just recently paid for your fire station, if not more. The difference between the fire station and D B W is we also have several other situations such that it's all dead. Our centralized fueling data. If the fire station and their fuel station, it doesn't be a different animal. Technically, everything runs off of our legitimate. Um, so in order for them to move properly, this, this building may actually be more than your first.
Yeah, so this is a huge.
Hmm, it's actually, but this has been a long time, a long time coming up, but I don't need to say like.
No, I, I get that, but so has, so has everything else.
No, fair enough. But that's, I mean, there has been consideration about the town as a whole, and there have been conversations. Whether it be the fire station, you know, like school. The water sewer, you know, like what um, treatment upgrades. It's just all, it's, you can't do it any once. So like, unfortunately, like many towns and cities, uh, public works garage and yard is usually overlooked. It's, it's out of sight, out of mind. Ours is as well. Unless you're visiting wildlife. Um. Or the new kayak station, actually. But I, I think, I think the town has been successful. I think to your point, David, about sort of the awareness when it came to the water. Uh, water supply capacity issue that the town needs to be sensitive to and planning board is sort of, is grown accustomed to discussing as well. This, this could get there. I mean, but it's just difficult. It's not as in people's face. This is in the way. Yeah, I think that the conversation is supported with a comprehen- comprehensive document, not just. D B W director going out and saying, we need X, Y, Z. There'll be real doubt of points.
Oh, I get that. Yeah, this is sort of the first step in many ways, but. It's got to be put into the mix. It's got to be in the bowl, everything that's being talked about.
Well, fortunately, Representative Hogan had been, I mean, it had been talked about, right? So like, Representative Hogan's team. Was able to allocate the state money, and Justin described it. There was money from ARPA from the federal level that was to the state. And then the legislative, um, you know, offices, including represent home and deliberated where it went separately to town got. And so the majority of our money is, has gone to the water treatment plant, like millions and millions of dollars are gone there, which I think is well, well worth it. Um, but these are projects that also need to be addressed. And so we're able to sort of use some of the town money to supplement the, the state.
What type of grant money is available for that type of project?
Hmm, you're seeing. Unfortunately, unfortunately, the state doesn't, this kind of falls under fire stations, town halls and police stations. There, so unlike this, uh, school building authority, there has been advocacy. And it's been minded.
I advocated to, uh, both, uh, Senator Eldridge's uh. Uh, Representative Hogan to include a, because it's public safety.
Yeah.
To include a, uh, some type of a surcharge on auto insurance policies at the Commonwealth. That could be then used as a way to build up, you know, manors lost out because we're not going to get the benefit for the, for a fire station or a police station. For, for those types of buildings and utilize that type of, of, of a funding source. Um, it's never gotten any traction, but that's, that's the only way you can have a general involvement, public safety wise, whatever. To collect money on a global scale to help communities like ours to pay for big projects like this.
So, yeah, yeah, we were very lucky even with this, with this opportunity. The feasibility study has been on the capital plan for over ten years. And uh, Kate Hogan is able to really come through with, you know, those one-time opportunities with ARPA. We were able to solve a lot of problems with ARPA. It also creates more problems or more conversation of how we can resolve because it gets us. You know, a starting point, and that starting point is going to be the conversation of how we manage and operate it. You know, we're very sensitive to that. I, I wear many hats in this community and very aware of identifying priorities. Part of the reason that we, you know, modified our ability to house our water staff is because I'm well aware that we're the leaders school. I am also well aware that the treatment plant facilities and my staff would support this as well, is we would kindly, gladly. House ourselves in a building that's gonna fall down so that we don't have to wake up to no water coming out of your faucets tomorrow. You know, that's our job. Our job is to put ourselves second and, and first, which is the water treatment. Uh, projects we have in front of us. We have this whole opportunity, which at least allows us to have a larger conversation of order of operations. How do we put this in a ten-year, fifteen-year?
Okay, does anybody like to make a motion?
I guess, I guess.
Do a question, Mike. Go ahead.
As you know, I'm not from around here, so I might get shut down for this. But um, what are the possible opening for any kind of regional approach to these facilities?
Yes. And the common all the matches is one percent. And, and I don't mean to say like. You'll actually have better luck. They might be, you're gonna kill, you'll have better luck with public safety, regionalization of D P W. It's almost impossible in this state, or at least just haven't really come to fruition in the state. Um. We do have, you know, intermunicipal agreements, but not at the state, after his public safety. I will tell you every once in a while, um, if he get in a pinch with a heart in the middle of the night for a water break. We may be able to rely on like Concord, Southern acting just like they would with us. But when you're talking about stamping, changing over it, that is, that might happen. And sharing equipment is disproportionate. Um, it's not the same as sending one cruiser over and one cruiser back. It's disproportionate approaches to what capabilities of store are. Versus the capabilities of um. The town of Mayfair, there's no two D P Ws like.
Okay, so there's, how many buildings are on the site right now?
So there's, how many buildings are on the site right now?
So right now, we have a garage that houses our centralized mechanic shop too.
Go for this, just the garage, or is it all?
The entire. Yeah, there's failures in every location.
And what's the input from the town to propose outcomes with this project?
So you mean, so are we, we think public partnership or public?
No, more on the how many buildings are we thinking about? Are we looking to renovate existing versus tear down and build new?
So that's part of the scope. We're looking at two alternative sites and current place location. I will say the inefficiency of what we currently have, that wouldn't, we wouldn't look to have three built. Like anything else, just like the treatment plants you've heard me say, we shouldn't have this. The only reason we currently have three facilities there, one of them is assault, Shen, you're always gonna have that separate. But it's the outlier is actually the modified combos. So at one point, the town didn't have any garage, they housed all their vehicles outside. And the pump was modified with the host of the theaters. Then that just kind of stuck as they started garage and equipment, and now that pump host has come to its its end at that point. We would look at anything, if it was an onsite possibility, would be an expansion and improvement of the current garage and the potential um. Removal of underground storage tanks or our petroleum tanks are actually underground in a flood zone, which is even worse. So stuff like that. But yes, we would look at that. This entire study would look at.
What are your, what are your current, we don't need to get into it in detail, but alternative sites?
Uh, current alternative sites, so we looked at, there is the potential for two sites, as you know, Maynard is that built out. So one of the prime locations that would be the the least costly to the town of Maynard would be to utilize our material yard within our water tree. So high hellier. So that location could potentially house um our DPW garage. Facility admin and the potential for a long-term recycle center improvements, as you will see come through, it's always staffed. That site proximity to the river, make it there. Uh, but it is a large area that the town owner owns, operates in the facility. The second location would be potentially private property, which would be behind the current fire station.
Okay. Any other questions? Would someone like to make a move?
I will move to approve the contract with the Negro Corporation for the Department of Public Works DPW Facility Feasibility Study. Under the House Doctor contract of one thirty seven three, in the amount of one hundred ninety nine thousand fifty dollars. As presented on our review to digital submissions is up.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Justin.
Police department was next.
Seems unfair, I mean, he survived second.
One of the, you you've already failed, you didn't bring up.
Okay, uh, this is uh my budget overview, but I'm gonna just quickly go over just uh the department, you know, and some other things. Oh, yeah, yeah, give me a second. I I realize where where we were at. Just a quick point on department and structure, leadership and some of the services and the like. Okay, so.
Uh, just the leadership, uh, obviously myself is chief, deputy chief Chris Toriano, Lieutenant Brian Pushen. And Lucy is the executive assistant who part of the leadership team because of her institutional knowledge is a lot more than mine at the time. Uh, the employees, we have twenty-one full-time, um, eight part-time officers, uh, two crossing guys. Uh, five dispatches, dispatch supervisor, and three civilian traffic enforcement, three civilian traffic enforcement. Will form a special offices, but because of posts and uh their requirements, because they didn't have the full-time academy. Uh, and it didn't work as police office, because that was the only way you could get what called Bridge Academy to get, to keep your certification. They get decertified institution, not through uh any type of misconduct or anything like that. Just they couldn't keep it, which happened to several hundred, kind of thousands of. Uh, here is the next slide, the organizational prepper of the department, uh, with myself and Donald at home. But the three functions of the department, investigative, patrol and communications. We have fully staffed. Which that was one of my missions for a long, long time, it seemed like. Uh, our mission statement, the mission in the main police department is to efficiently provide quality police services to our community. By promoting a safe environment with an emphasis on treating everyone equally, with trust, integrity, fairness and professionalism. Both values, integrity, professionalism, passion, teamwork and community satisfaction. Uh, obviously, we operate seven, uh, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The control gift run a four and two schedule, so. That's how they get weekends off sometimes, otherwise they have five and two, probably the old man wouldn't get it, which uh we've done, and that changed. A long time ago because of that reason. Uh, we have administration and specialized assignments where uh mostly Monday through Fridays. Sometimes we do have to come in on weekends or at night. And the core functions of, you know, uh, crime prevention, traffic control. Uh, versus community services, which is everything we try to instill in the officers, get out of the crew, know the top of people in the community and be a part of it. Uh, that's what small companies. Okay, some of the uh sponsoring services, we'll go through every of that, uh, as I just uh went through some of that, but. Um, we are an accredited department. We are coming up on our accreditation at the end of this year. What's the fall? Deputy chief and sergeant had a meeting today with the accreditation commission. Uh, and we should find out soon what month or about uh that we'll have to approve re-admission. Uh, we don't anticipate any issues. Uh, it's just a lot. We are still part of NMLAC, which is, um. It's a, it's a real good thing, because the training that they offer, the quality of police services. It's a good retention for officers that wanna do uh more things, because with small town, you're limited in what you do. And uh currently, there are four officers in the, including us, that that are part of uh either a team or a committee. Uh, jail diversion program, uh, Emily Black is a jail diversion coordinator, which is a huge, huge part of policing now. We started this in two thousand fifteen, well before, um, Paul, the police was born, well before that, where. We understood, you know, mental health illness and that uh type of thing, substance abuse. Where she follows up on that, she goes on call with us, she has an office now in the station. Uh, it's it. It's transformed somewhat of police work to have somebody like that, um, where before it was, you know. You never talk about it, but he's integral in follow-ups and things like that, especially with uh substance abuse and that.
How many people at time, Mike, are are part of that program? How many, how many? How many, you know, how many residents are a part of that program at any one given time? Is there, is there a number you could put to it or?
I can get numbers from Emily, she uses a quarterly thing. I mean, I I wanna say, uh, last time it was a hundred and seventy-seven. I believe that was like uh annual.
Carry that cash flow to that report over time.
Uh, that is probably a little over depth, but what happened was she used to do all the nine towns in Concord Court. And she was wiped out. Now, a couple of towns acting got their own, um, one that they they paid for, so they left. And then they hired another one, they got another grant that took over Lexington, Bedford. And I forget the other community that they do. So this is just now conquered and made it in Carolina, but Carolina, I think we had a hundred and seventy-seven. Uh, she doesn't spend much time in town. But she's been assigned in Concord, uh, in Maynard, but where we gave her off. Always over eighty, all along.
What age group is represented best in that? It is across.
I can, if if you want, it's, I can.
But it's not like it's.
We have, we have like, oh, no, no, it's it's not, it's not limited to juveniles, it's not limited to seniors. It's, it did, pretty much when they cut the pie, it was, you know, one group was seventeen percent, one was twenty-three, one was twelve. So this pie made everything, you know.
Yeah, there's something like this program started with a broader area, so smaller, and then as it was successful, broke off, that's. The need became higher or more recognized. Am I characterizing that correctly?
Yes, the need became extremely high. Uh, the state uh understood it, the grants that were approved for these.
And how the goal is this program total, when did it?
We started in two thousand fifty, and did it preexist before Maynard joined? Uh, we requested a grant from it, so we created it in our read.
With in conjunction with other communities?
Yes, okay, yeah.
Okay, and with with the, with all the, with the nine communities that go to uh.
Right.
Competitive, right, and I know that this was probably two years ago. Um, how would we know if we're at that point again, when maybe Emily is over taps?
I would probably be coming to you soon. I I would love to have a. Uh, and uh, we are looking into ways of possibly doing this. The the problem is, is people think because social worker, that she would work, uh, social worker down there. Is the difference between doing clinical social work and doing like a town social worker, looking for housing for people, looking for that. She's actually doing the clinical stuff where she's going to fund people in crisis or trying to find them issues. She can do the other stuff, but. Uh, we are looking um at those options and. You know, I think she'd be admirable to come in here, uh, whole kind of group, good find.
Did we see a spike during the pandemic that backed off at all with this sort of?
We, it was kind of like an up and down thing. At first, it was, it went way down, because people kind of stayed. Home, nobody saw, yeah, that. And then when it first started coming out, then we saw a spike. But then there's been different things. I think I could talk to to the the holders, the thing that you didn't see your neighbor like you used to see him. So we found those uh type of issues coming out. But now it's because everybody, it's it's just constant. I mean, we, this is thermal, uh, you know, only in Maynard, because we always seem to have, you know, some interesting people in town here. That uh did, but it's it's just the crisis part of it had grown, that's about it. But I I will say, we we, the officers have always been excellent. I remember when I was growing up, they're trained, we've been trained in this uh type of thing for. You know, decades, you know, more now we're making sure that everybody, I guess, but because of. Uh, the issues, you know, you don't want that disaster because you didn't understand it, uh, how to de-escalate something. Okay, uh, if I, you know, restorative justice and uh domestic violence, restorative justice is where. You know, instead of going through the court system, they go through a program uh where they have to actually face the victims at some point. Uh, it's victim-driven, that the victims have to agree to it, uh, and that, but it's something where. You know, those first-time offenders or uh because it was an instance or they didn't notice, you know. A lot of times, they didn't understand what the consequences were or their actions. So you you put them through that program and they have to approve. Um, in a lot of ways, way more uh in-depth than it would be just go to court and get it dismissed. You know, pay a fine again. Yeah, I hate to say it, but especially the children, it's not a, uh, a step that's gonna be, but a dismiss with a fine. You know, and they won't learn it.
From the court method.
They learn something, they actually have to face, and they see sometimes the consequences they're at, and it's where sometimes, you know.
So despite the extra work, you still see value in the program.
Uh, because of the S word.
Oh, it's more work for them.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I thought you meant for your office. Well, it 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 somewhat more work, but I mean, not. It's it's work for them. They have to write like letters, they have to do work, and it's it's mostly on a volunteer basis. That the uh people that facilitate. Network, but super agent.
Who who within your department makes a decision whether to approach the victim with this as an option?
Um, it pretty much, when it comes in the initial officer, like focus, uh, will kind of prompt you. To see if that this is good for super agent, and then they will talk their victim.
Okay, and. Before, before like putting it to uh. What what percentage of time would you say the victim says, no, I don't wanna go through this process? You have those numbers?
I don't think we've ever had, because we're not talking about, you know, um. Serious, serious crime, we're talking about somebody uh doing this. And here we tell them, like, you get this faculty, say your piece. So a lot of feel involved in the above, you know.
And then what kind of numbers are we talking about?
They're not huge numbers. Um, and you get it, some years, we've had uh thirteen, I think this past year we had. And the domestic violence services network, that's a great program where um. Anything that involves domestic violence, we send to them, even if it's just an argument, we send to them, just so um. They can put it on their radar, or they can offer services to certain people, because sometimes, you know, these arguments are over financial. And they have resources that they can help them with that, or uh ways of doing, ways to help them, um, that would be out of our scope.
Maybe the domestic case has resulted in a call with the police department, that uh, not just a neighbor saying, hey, I heard my my.
We've, we've been, just as Maynard, you know, we're a small community, both in, you know, uh, population, but also size. You know, people hear your names. We have some of the surrounding towns, you know, you wouldn't get a neighbor if they was bringing.
Yeah.
Where, so we get called to domestic calls a lot more often than a lot of the bodies. You know, not necessarily a, you know, um, fight or assault battery, it's just an argument.
Yeah.
That's wrong, because somebody can hear it.
So somebody says something's going on next door and you show up and, oh, he burned the toast.
Yeah, I, over the years, yeah, some of the the reasoning is, you know, what what you you would think would be ludicrous, but. You know, the old saying, you don't know what goes on in somebody else's house.
Yeah, so something like that. But that, something like that would get reported something.
We send all the local reports to uh to this domestic violence service first.
There any record kept of that? So is some. Is is there any record?
Oh, yeah.
That, so that if somebody gets later gets in trouble, legitimate. Can that be pulled out and used to be used against them in the, in a, in a criminal case?
Uh, like prior bad act?
Yeah.
Um. You can use it for certain things, like a fifty-eight A hearing, dangerousness hearing, you can do prior bad acts and everything, but usually for. Fair trial and everything, you can't bring it in that, that's, that's me putting on the way, that's evidentiary, you won't be allowed to bring me. Because that didn't necessarily have to do with that, but that was. Can have impacts in sentencing things. Plus, part of this domestic violence thing, uh, what are called high-risk groups. So if, you know, uh, an officer from every department that sends to it is on uh a team where they evaluate. Some of the people that they send in, like, if we had somebody who we thought, like, this guy's dangerous. Um, man, he should be watched, but. Uh, the victim may not wanna believe him, or doesn't, or this or that, they'll still be put on high risk, so. Uh, it'll be monitored where that, if that report comes or if that person. I guess, because courts can do something more to them too, if he goes with his court, or if he's even on probation. Okay, uh, now to the budget part. Uh, in the past, uh, I put up here, like, uh, because I think, like, the history of the police budget over the last few years, uh, is important. Um, you know, in many years, you know, we've, uh, almost every other year since the chief. It's been, you know, a reduction in our budget, and then a slight increase and then a reduction in increase. So, um, it hasn't kept up with contractual obligations, you know, uh, as you see on uh that the slide above here. But at that five-year period, um, the increase to the department budget was one point eight six percent. Where the contr- contracts increase was nine point seven five. Uh, sounds like it wouldn't be able to be kept up or whatever, but um, if you remember when I came before you, um, years ago. And we restructured the demand staff, and we restructured uh the efficiency in some of the department. I said this would save money, and actually, you know, it saved money for the time being because of that. Uh, in that time too, we've had some staffing shortages, so that has uh saved money, but that's not good. Uh, practice, because we had burnout, we had um instances right now. Everything is going very good, you know, um, well, good, everybody, um, is getting my multiple staff, so. Things run more efficient, uh, things that, plus, there's a lot of. Money that gets to uniforms, training to this, where if you keep losing people, it's basically just a form of waiting, so we wanna keep them. Uh, and then just with this, we haven't been overly spending on, we we don't buy things that we don't need and uh. We keep all the time to reasonable, um. Reasonable amounts. Uh, there's, there's obvious all the time, there's. The trainings that we have that that are applied to post, that were required every year, uh, have increased, and so we have the. So this is always gonna be, uh, and one of the. Uh, other big increases uh for the budget that my question, uh, the education, uh. I think with remote and mobile education. Everybody's taking advantage of that, seems like, um, you know, until last year, I was generally one with an advanced three department, now three people. It is, uh, I think. Four or five people have actually advanced in recent last two years, along with hiring new people that have. Already have, uh, that's, um. One of the reasons why, but to get uh back to the requested year, which is uh a little over five percent. Uh, but again, contract, uh, for this year is three percent, and last year we have reduced, even though there's uh I negotiated two percent. Uh, therefore, again, uh, even though the increase this year seems to have again. It's still only seven point two percent in the sixth year, uh, where the contracts increased to ten point one percent, again. We're very able to do that because of, you know, new hires means uh a big, big principal down, but you can only do that so long. Before you have to. You have to put, you know, into the just about the track, these, the increase that I'm asking, I only contracted, that's the only increases I asked. And, as I said, I think. One of the, yeah, departments. You have any questions?
My question really, probably for Greg, um, just because I haven't studied the percentages in your recommended budget. Um, where are you with police department?
The actually, I have a question, Chief, do these match your request, or do these match my recommendation? Probably your request.
My request.
So that was, no, that's, no, but then I wanted to clarify that, um, and and my direction to the department is was to present their requests.
Correct.
So, so like you.
So what what is?
I think I reduced overtime non significantly.
Actually, it looks like, so I have, I actually have, I pulled up your.
Thank you.
It looks like a four point four, so you might reduce, no, but the four point four percent increase, I think.
I think that's.
And I think, and you asked for what, seven, no. Okay, all right, we're just trying to figure out the number.
Okay.
Um, and then my only comment, Chief, um, is. Uh, and I think, I I think I hear this repeatedly from members of the community, um. And I'll repeat the same thing as a fire chief as well, because uh, uh. The positive comments that I get about your staff and your officers and, you know, any. Anytime that people talk about their interaction, police department here in Maine, from my perspective. Has been extremely positive, and you should be proud of that, and we as a community should be proud of that. Um, the officers that I see, when when I encounter them, not paying attention to me. But just paying attention to what they're doing, they always seem to be so very positive and, uh, you know. Uh, great representatives for our community, if I can tell them, that's kudos to you and your staff and your leadership team. Um, so, thank you.
Yeah, no, I I absolutely agree, we are great people.
I have a question, um, you mentioned that you uh had to deal with being short-staffed over the last few years. And you alluded briefly, um, you talked about burnout that that um had been an issue perhaps, and. Um, could you just enlarge a little bit more about the impact that being short-staffed? Um, has had on on the services that you've been able to provide?
For about a. Three year period, um, I mean, we we hit, when I took over a chief, I had all these ideas, it was, I, you know, it was great. And then, you know.
We remember.
So then COVID hit, and then three months after COVID, uh, the George Lloyd incident happened. Uh, so, when I took over, we were down five. Uh, and in that time period, I hired four, well, only two worked out, you know, and then three retired. You know, so I was chasing, trying to hire, and the problem with that is, um, it was overtime. Like I said, you have to fill, somebody calls them sick, uh, you can take vacations, uh, people think that. But then the anxiety of COVID and the, yeah, I think everything's better, and I think, uh, your offices, yeah. Uh, I always said, don't listen to the national, listen to people in town, because we have great. But it still feeds on, when you all you hear is negative. Uh, so, that burnout, that that part of it, I always, I seem to be coming up. I have another officer that I presented, I have another officer presenting, you know, it was, um, I I would joke with other chiefs, I go, I'm not the chief. I'm director of HR, you know, because that's all I seem to be doing, because, and then I could see the burnout, and I'm trying to. Work with them as best I can, but you have to, it's a twenty four seven uh profession, so they have to be able. So, as time went on, there were a few people that left policing. Well, in general, just because, like I said, prior things and, um. The, you know, it's not a knock at all to newer generation, but my, when I came up, you know, overtime, I wanted everything. You know, now people uh value their time off a lot more, which, you know, they probably have a right, better, you know, better idea. Work uh balance than I did at the time, but, so, they don't take as much of it. So that even made more that they didn't want to take, and then when nobody, when. Not many people are taking overtime for a period, nobody was taking it, and everything was over, because I'm not gonna take two and get ordered into two. I'll just get ordered into two, or ordered into three, so I'll have one. So, it became, you know, uh, for a period of time, yeah, uh, difficult, but I think we've got, we've come out of it, and we're back to full staff, everybody, uh. Is out and everything, but that causes burnout, you know, when you're not home, again, it was anxiety at the time, so. You know, with uh all the regulations with the COVID right down, uh, things, and again, with posts, the unknown there, which. You know, the police chiefs have been asking for some kind of quotes for a long time, it was just. The way it was brought in, they are finding that, you know. The legislation here is difficulties in in meeting deadlines and going through that, don't. Um, but I think we're in a real good place.
Thank you.
I think a lot of us don't really understand the the burnout for for police officer, never mind the calls and and. The pressure from national and local, um, but it is also the fact that it's it's a twenty four hour day job, so. You, that that's the problem, is if you, if someone doesn't take a shift. Someone stays, or someone answers the phone and they have to come in, regardless of whether they want to, or whether they have plans, or whether it was a holiday, so. Um, I I think it takes a certain, um. Caliber of person to um to work these types of jobs, um, I completely appreciate everything that that shift workers do. Um, I mean, this is something that, um, you know, it can be pretty painful at times, but, um, we thank everybody for for the work that they do. And the fact that they get.
And sometimes, like, uh, years back, when I was a. Uh, I'm like, you know, just a uh an officer, I was always president of the union, and one of the things I put in is, you know, um. Where you could take weekends, you could put in protected weekend, so you had that weekend on, uh, and the problem. When you're to a staff that you didn't, you never know when you're gonna get one in, so there's that anxiety, I might get one in tonight, I can't get one in today, I can't get that, you know. And those protected weekends always help, but when you, when it's constant. That anxiety and everything like that, length of burnout, and like people saying, and, and for a time being, there were plenty of other jobs to to go after. So. You know, we lost people to that, um, a lot of people to, no matter what, this small town, when when I was younger too, I wanted all the action, I wanted this, so. Some go to uh bigger communities, you know, um, because uh that's, yeah, they don't want, they soon to find out the grass is thin.
Anything else for the police chief, what you wanted to fight about? Well, thank you, Mike.
So the thumbs up, I got it here. How was everyone?
How are you?
Good. Following that one, Dr. Ryan understood the assignment totally, but it's my first year, so I guess.
It's a six slide, you're good.
You're a hero, six slides.
Everyone got the same direction.
All right.
But still, it's my first time, so, you know.
So how was your first year been so far?
Rewarding, challenging, exhausting, exhilarating, and all everything, you know. Just as much as I think what you would expect.
Yeah.
So, um, kind of humbling year to learn, um, that I didn't know everything that I thought I knew, and in some ways. Been exhilarating that I knew more than I thought I did, so depends on which lens I'm looking through that day when I get up.
I was looking at my calendar, um. From last year, I like to keep my calendar, see what was happening a year ago, I think it was this week was the chief's. Um, event over at the uh. Yeah, uh, when you guys got called away during his. Literally been a year since the chief.
And to be honest with you, it's gone by so fast, like. And you know what it's good about, like, I keep looking at like my vacation schedule and things, but I haven't even taken a day because I'm at that point where I'm like. I'm sure I'll get over that, so. All right, so I won't bore you anymore with this, I went very short and sweet as an overview of basically where we were. Um, and as for the budget, I guess we'll get into that, um, so I'll table that comment, but. Uh, there we are at our new station, which already went by, which is great. Uh, I just kind of went through a quick overview of our incidents to show that our growth has increased, although you guys are well aware that our staffing has not. Um, so, in the last five years, we've had a sixty percent increase in runs, uh, we're up to seven percent from last year. If you had to ask me what the biggest component of that was, I would say it's the effective digital way. Um, both Camilla Gardens and the uh Emerson uh Virgin Care. Um, really are big run. Uh, facilitators for us, but, um. Nothing that we can manage, so, we're doing well that way, but, um, we are a lot busier, which. You know, it just kind of cycles down, and it's putting a lot more work on other people to make sure that we get everything done. We do have a beautiful new facility that we're very thankful of. Been a lot of work to work out the kinks, I didn't ever realize that that would be part of the role of a fire chief, but I know a lot of things about building. Facilities that I did not know about before. Including how to move telephone poles and random things, um, so those are incidents. Uh, because we have such a great new space, we've been able to. Increase our service and our training ability, and we've really capitalized that on this year. Uh, we have logged over twenty nine hundred hours of training, which, um, to my record is the most we've ever been able to do. Uh, something that I really liked that I sat here a year ago and said that I wanted to do was collaborate with a lot of different agencies. And bring a lot of resources to us and be able to spread our skill set to other people, and that has been a, like a. We've done that in phase, so we had mid-flight here, which was a very cool thing, we've had Eversource come in and do GAF school, we've invited. Uh, other departments in our district to do training, we just did fire prevention officer one, we've done officer one. We've had NEMA classes here, FEMA classes here, we've done classes to our public, we really. Outsource and try to get as many resources to us and to our people, and as well as disseminate that other departments, we've been super successful there. Um, so I listed just some of the classes that were taken, and, um. Everybody's really done an amazing job this year. Definitely doing everything that we. Um, so, because we have a new space, um, I don't know if you follow us on Facebook, but we've done a lot with trying to. Get the interest and spread the word and everything that the community has done to support us. Um, I probably do about a tour a week of somebody that comes in from our Friday feature. Uh, campaign that we're doing, but, uh, we've done tours to all kinds of different people and brought our trucks out. And done a lot of things within the community, um, one of our captains got a, um. Statewide award this year and was a published author, um, so we got a lot of publications for that. And utilize that as well, without forming book readings and things of that sort, um. We've done a lot of things with community businesses that we had never done in the past, so we've gone into the mill. And taught active tutor with the police and first aid with us at the same time, we did a class here at Town Hall for. The staff here, um, I taught CPR to all the telegraph effect, we really worked to do all the collaborations that we've done.
You also did that, I don't know if you just, sorry, the, the Until Help Arrives. Yes, that one too, right?
Yeah, so my intention is to kind of get the ball rolling back again on like a certain theme and that kind of our. Um, your public nurses and that stuff, so that was kind of phase one of that, uh, and I couldn't believe the turnout, we had. About thirty five people that that came to that, and everybody signed back up to say, hey, I want to be a part. And a lot of it were people not only just near, but some surrounding communities, so that was a very cool thing. Right, so, and you know, it's like, well, that whole community approach and empower your people, and all that, so that was very good stuff, but we hope to do more of them in the future. Um, like I said, we've done a lot of collaborations, we were really closely this year with the council on aging. Um, so we did a whole thing where they came down for a few classes, CPR, first aid, that kind of stuff, but we also have been working on. Emergency preparedness for them, um, fall prevention and stuff, so we've started a little series where we go to them every month. So that's going well, um, we've done our safe. Um, our state, um, committee, which I'll talk about during the budget. Um, kind of changed the structure of how we did it, so it would be more impactful to the tools, opposed to just coming and doing one big assembly to a bunch of kindergartners. That lose their attention speed very quickly, we divided it into small groups, it takes more time, but it's been more effective. And seeing this all comes with that, the part why he's got. Life educator of the year has, he's really good. Sending messages, so, uh, we've also worked really closely with the police department.
He was there.
I swear, I will say.
Don't want to work together anymore.
Yes, um, we collaborated every month where we meet the on-duty patrol officers with the fire department that's on duty. We go to different properties and stuff, so we're really doing a lot, kind of bridge some of the work where they. Um, and then our final phase is where we are right now, so we're all moved in, everything's going well, and we are building the training. Which is the last piece of the construction project. Uh, like I said, a lot of this year's focus, we thought it was moving into an all-done building, but. Nope, there was a lot to it, that's okay, um, but we're now finishing this up, even this picture was done last week, now there's walls up there. And it looks a lot different, but this is gonna allow us to train while we're on duty, and as I said, facilitate other classes. Like tech rescues and things that we could not do, even imagine before. Uh, I just found out today to get a grant that will fund a lot of equipment that we can work, so. Making a lot of progress in that, but. As for the budget, I have no slide. So that's the end of the slide, um, I am still working off of what was Chief Dow's funded, um, so. Yeah, that's just, it's just kind of is as it is, um, you know, I'm working off someone else's math for the last year and. And trying to make that work, and then this is my first year submitting my own budget, uh, I would like to say that I was. Not very creative in a sense that I have to kind of baby step into this, so my requests were not grand, um. Maybe we just want to talk about this, but there were a a couple of. Line items that if you looked at them specifically, I call them the cases of missing zeros, there was a problem with last year's budget that. Just was, so that makes it look like a dramatic increase, but. They were missing zeros, so.
And we made up that balance at town meeting.
Yeah, yeah, but that showed, like, if you look at the numbers, you go, whoa, what what was she doing there? Um, otherwise, I tried to be very reasonable with, um, increases, and the only thing that is. Dramatic, looking at this, was our fire prevention, um, budget, and that's the safe. Things that have been done in the past, um.
Is that the overtime with it, the fire prevention?
Yeah, so, we get a grant that funds the safe, um, budget. Um, budget every year and it's it's based on the population, how much funds that you get. Um, but we had never really budgeted for the overtime for people to go teach those classes. And now that we're out and we're doing so much, we weren't really meeting the demands, so I wanted to reflect that in here. Cause that fixed number doesn't change, not really paid for the supplies and the things that we do that way, but. Doesn't pay for the people. So you're gonna get one, you're gonna fund it.
Is there an area that, I know when you have printed out is what the board can see, like the like the breakdown? Um, is there an area, similar question that Chief Noel will get, is there an area of your budget request? I'm not going to be offended if you say like Greg, Greg zero and what I wanted, and I really want, this that, this is your opportunity to tell the board.
I think the biggest thing that you're not seeing here that you are well aware of is the lack of a deputy. Um, that's a thing that I know has been brought to you guys for probably twelve to fifteen years. Um, and it was in the original budget, which didn't make it again, um, with our call volume and. The amount of things that we have to kind of spread out between our captains and myself, it's. I don't want to say we're missing things, but we're missing some opportunities where we could really improve the services that we do to the community. Especially in the area of fire prevention. There's just so much that. We're missing based on the fact that we can't get into the community that as much as we need to, especially with the call volume going up. Right, if I send the crews out to go in investigator, you know, inspect the property and then they get a call every. Fifteen, twenty minutes that they do, it's not really effective and it's not really good service for people, so. That's the one spot that I think is a void in our budget, um.
Do you have you can, I I, my my perspective has always been, um, and I've never actually had a chance to ask it publicly. Um, but is there a reason that you don't consider a captain as opposed to a deputy chief?
So with that, I don't know how that would work really well with our organizational kind of structure. Um.
Couldn't they be Monday through Fri- Friday fire prevention?
So they could be, but there's a union, there's no union, I know I'm on an island by myself and that's kind of. Puts me in a difficult position, um. It becomes taxing to kind of manage all the things that need to be managed. It would be very nice if I could have a partner on that side. Kind of runs through some of the things that really need a team approach. Um. But it is. Almost what we have to do at this point, as in that's how we're kind of. Dealing with the lapses in things that need to be get done and we're kind of making the captains on their overtime to come back and do those kinds of things. So we don't have the right solution at this point.
Those kind of things being the fire prevention items that you had mentioned?
Yeah, I mean, people, which is why we had to kind of bump up a lot of the safety thing, right, because.
You take thirty seconds to just dig into that one more level about what.
Yeah.
Tactically that means that the individuals are doing, whether hypothetical deputy chief or the current captain.
So do you mean what their ancillary duties are right now?
Yeah, what would, yeah, what types of things would the deputy chief help you cover that are not being picked up right now?
I have a fire prevention in a sense of the factor piece of it, that is. Knowing all the mass building codes, how they change, what regulations are what and how all of that regulates, it changes so quickly. It's very hard for me to manage administratively what has to happen, personnel that has to happen, training checks happening, all of those things. And be current in all of those codes and things, it's almost like being a building inspector, but on the fireside totally and. It's it's hard for me to get that knowledge base and to do that, so that is somebody that could be an expert in that. Field, right now I'm playing catch up, like even this week we had a food truck application that came in. So there's a whole thing of what a fire department has to inspect that has to go with a food truck. So I had to spend two days researching NFPA standards on food trucks. What's regulated by us, come up with a packet, do the whole thing, that would be a perfect task of somebody in that position. Going in commercials, like we had to do the blooming house inspections this week and all those kind of properties.
So I don't know if that's a question for you or Greg, but does this in any way slow down uh our ability to provide support for some meetings they want to do? Or they, you know, the commercial business and you know, we get complaints about permitting and slowing and and.
It does slow me down, but it does take a lot of time that I have to stop what I'm doing and stop the grants and stop the other things and.
You can't get other things accomplished. Are trying not to slow down.
Yeah, generally those things are scheduled in a way, there's like, if they're not waiting. Like the, like whether it be for a voting inspector or fire inspection, like what, once it's sort of like incriminated or the application has been submitted. It gets, it gets on the, it gets on the radar and then they tend to achieve or the voting inspector or whoever, uh, help. Uh, we're pretty, we're pretty expedient just in our response, but but it's, we never want to fall back, like we never want to.
Understood, and and clearly there's a time to be spent on that, that's less time, it's gonna grant another way to benefit the town, part of the um. Complaints we get are of the nature of after the inspection, if it was prompt, oh, I didn't know I was responsible for that and I understand and I. Know that, but is there a way to provide more support or upfront services or just a heads up, is that something that could be? Covered partially by a deputy chief?
Oh, I would think so, so I mean, I don't know if I'm totally hearing what you're saying or picking up, but things like um. Electrical vehicle charging stations, that's a new thing to our community, that's a whole piece for the fires. So. I have to spend a lot of time researching that and gaining that knowledge and then being able to disseminate it to the building inspector, to the electrical inspector. To the solar inspector and come up with a whole process of how we're gonna do that and then go do those. You know, those inspections, but I'm playing catch up a little bit on that, so it would be. A massive assistance if we could have somebody that is schooled in just those pieces without a different, only required.
And what, what about, um, and so, you know, and obviously. I have not changed, the budget is always forefront in my head, um. Is there a salary difference between a deputy chief and an assistant chief?
But we've never had either.
Right, know what I'm saying, so, right, so I'm wondering like, is a deputy chief, is that, if you advertise for a deputy chief, is that going to command more? And would it make more sense to go for an assistant chief, which might be more than a captain, but less than a deputy?
I think it's where you, it's the title that you give them or the budget, right? I don't think there's a cap for one or the other, it's the organizational structure that they work out, so.
Yeah. Cause that would take them out of the union also, so that's, that's why I'm trying to.
Like their white shirt. Yeah, no, I understand and, you know. Even that piece, right, like I said, the budget part is new to me, so that would take some sitting down with. People who are better versed on how to figure all that stuff out, but. I can only give my recommendations of the assistance that. You know, clearly I. And it's hard for me to say I need help, to be honest, I don't know how many times we've had this, I'm like, oh, I can just do it, but there does become a place that. You know, you can't do everything.
Right, right.
I have a question, well, a two-part question, um, focusing in on the um, the fire prevention. Uh, strategies and training and so forth, um, so the first part is. Uh, how long would you say that there has been a sort of a rigorous fire protection or prevention, sorry? Um, training services in the town, um, and has there been sufficient to maybe expect? The difference in uh, the number of fires uh, in in the town, I mean, I I know there's a lot of variables going into that, I get that. Yes.
Talk that over, but that.
Good idea, good idea.
That becomes a big pushback in the like late sixties, early seventies where fire prevention was the first time it came on the ra- on the radar with the. Whole study that was done called America Burning and that's when your smoke detectors came in and all of that stuff, so it has been a. Dramatic change in culture and if you looked at the fires we had in the eighties to the fires we have today, we are doing an outstanding job in fire prevention. Which is amazing, right, we want to be able to prevent the incident is our biggest goal, if something catches on fire, we have done a discernment. Is how I look at it, yes, we're here to help, but our main job is to prevent the incident, so that has to be a big, big piece of our focus. And of course, where most of our people are, are those commercial occupancy, which we have safeguards in place like sprinklers and. Exit signs and and fire drills and all of those things, and I know this is probably terribly boring, like. But it's it's the learning and the changing of that culture which we start in elementary school and work all the way through. But any business and I'm sure if you looked at your own house today, you become blind to your own space, right, so. Uh, if you walked into your house right now, I could probably find that you had an extension cord plugged into something that you shouldn't or a smoke detector that probably hasn't been checked in here. There's things that you just become blind to, you might not even have a house number on it because it's not something that you look for. So it takes that new set of eyes to come into any property and kind of identify new that is education and. Community interaction and building with those relief. So it's a whole piece of it, which I know is like a little warm and fuzzy and all over the place, but it. It's a big part of what the fire service does and. At this point where where you're right, we don't have that many fires, if you look at the fire department, there's a big portion to change it to the all hazards department. Because I'll tell you, we don't get a lot of calls for fires, but we do get a lot of calls. So anytime somebody doesn't have a solve problem, it could be anything. This where a call of.
Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely aware that that's a complicated big scope task and. Yeah, yeah.
We could go on.
Any, any other fire related questions?
No, but I will, I will make my comment about uh, system staff and the um, you know. The way the public sees the fire department and or the hazards department and uh. And just, you know, year leadership obviously plays a big role in that. Uh, I have a little story where I stopped in one day, just for a brief question. Of one firefighter who was down working on the truck and before I was done, the entire shift was out. And engaged in conversation about, you know, it was right before the Army Navy game and that was the question, but it was um. You know, I I think it was indicative of how the department is with just a resident showing up with a question, um. And everybody without, the entire shift was out there literally, uh, we had a great conversation, so thank you to them, thank you to the team.
Good to hear, I am their biggest cheerleader and I hope that. My biggest role is not only to support the community, but support them, I hope. Everybody has that exact same reaction and interaction with the department, that means the world to me.
Yeah, thank.
Thank you, anything?
Congratulations on finishing your, your.
First year.
Year one, no, well, your your first year and the uh endurance that you just did.
Oh, it's the me, bitch.
Yes, exactly.
Yes.
With uh.
You can't freak it if you don't play.
Yeah, I was very.
Thank you, I appreciate that, they are uh raised a lot of money, so that's. So thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, have a good night. Alright, Gregory.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I just wanted, um, so one, I spent my budget reporting town chatter on January twenty first. Um, to see more docs, I, you know, there, it sounded like. Um, and then the departments, you know, they, they're there were as well, so that's uploaded and um, my. My work rate this week um has been to sort of orient this budget recommendations into Saturday's proposal. Uh, for the presentation of my proposal, um, however, um, some news came up, so. Um, the governor did release House Two, House Two references like the second session of legislature and and then um. Not great news, but came to the tent, so I had budgeted two and a half percent, a two, yeah, two and a half percent increase to both. Receipts and assessments, so when when the state gives money to the towns, um, you get money and then you're also assessed against that revenue. Um, assessments come for a number of reasons, um, usually they're related to enrollment of of out of district. Uh, students and that seemed to be the case, what I kind of broke down, yes, uh, the governor, uh. Was correct in that our unrestricted government aid was at three percent over at level twenty four for her this year, however. Um, we did have a similar amount of bolded outs out of town, which then was assessed against that revenue, so therefore. Uh, we have a hundred and forty five thousand dollar deficit according to uh, my recommendations, so I'm working on that. Um, at the same time, I still have the final numbers for our health insurance and our property insurance. We could get that at the end of the month, that's the expectation.
Are you expecting to have another uh meeting with the I C?
Oh, yeah, we, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Do you suspect that you will have any type of insight into what your suggestions are for this gap resulted from the governor by Saturday?
I mean, I have ideas. I don't know if I'll be prepared to, because I want to make sure it's kind of flushed out pretty well and I'm, and I'm, I don't want to kind of like. I I think what I'm, what my plan is at the middle, do what I'm doing for now, is just sort of like reveal like where we are with it. But I I can't say whether I'll I'll be that prepared by Saturday, so. I think for that, I would like to, um, cause I just, this stuff sort of consumes, as I said, I say all the time, the budget consumes me and it does, I think about this all the time. So that's where we're, so otherwise, um. You know, what you can see is both my budget recommendations, the five or six pages, as well as. Uh, the breakdown per account, which the chief was supposed to leave it to, so you can, you can look at those. Um, I also uh provided a tax bill with tax, I I know that this is particularly noteworthy. Uh, your yearly, what would the absentee family household may expect to pay according to the different, you know, spending firm. Also included that to the board's session.
I would, if I were, I would have included the first two as, because those are. Those are in, right, the the new school debt exclusion and the. Household tax bill if town meeting, you know, if they appropriate the recommended budget.
The budget, I'm sorry, the debt to the school is, that was already appropriated, but the, the, my, the first line. Is the FY twenty five estimated tax rule, which that's.
That's it, right, so, so. But, okay.
So let's say, let's say, the, the, let's say the bu- the the budget coming to me in the spring is significantly less than my budget recommendation, then that number broke out. But generally, that that's.
I was gonna say, when did that happen?
Yeah, yeah, but I can say like, so in general, that's. Yeah, I just kind of want to give a sense of of where where the never, like, what your tax bill might have looked, I think it's helpful to have that number for me.
I I do have, and I know I make this suggestion every single year, um, and I'm gonna make it again. Uh, which is that I, you know, we're a hun- we're, we're a hundred and forty five thousand dollars short. We typically overfund the reserve fund for finance committee, we have not used. We have left, I believe, at least a hundred thousand in the account every year, at least since I've been here. And so if we're looking to pull some money from somewhere that isn't going to hurt.
Yeah.
I I really would like that suggestion at least blacked out.
Yeah.
Because I think that that.
I would get option, you're right, you're right, I do look at it, um, each time. But like, you know, it makes me nervous, that's all.
That's fair, but yeah, the finance committee will probably balk at that.
But I mean, like.
But who's, but do they, who sets that budget, who sets that fund, is that us or is that them?
You, you.
It's just their recommendation.
You're right, so like, let's say, let's say the finance committee finds that one particular account to be grounds for not recommending the entire budget. Which is, I I can't figure out, I don't know, but but like, I I also, of course, anyone appreciates a he- a like a. A weighty reserve fund, just because you never know, that's the whole point, um, but you're right, like, dude, physical management, we generally don't spend a learning part.
And it's not even that we don't spend up to it, but we haven't spent almost half of it each time, so um, even when.
Remind me, what's the purpose for that reserve fund?
That's okay, unexpected.
I'm gonna push back, because you have that, just because you don't need it, you still want that amount in the bank.
The frustrating part is if he comes free cash.
Which, I mean, and it's like.
We always have so much trouble getting capital, so you're just, by detracting from that, you're detracting from next year's capital and putting the town at more risk if. Something does happen where you need to spend the full amount and just because we have in the last five years doesn't mean you don't know what's coming next year, so I.
Well, I will say, even with Green Meadow, even with the Green Meadow School in twenty nineteen, we still did not. We we were, I think we only spent a hundred thousand dollars that year, but I would say. But I would say. Put it to you this way, what if you put that hundred thousand into a capital item on operating?
So just pull forward one year.
No, but what, so.
In fact, assuming it goes through capital because, oh, I see, I see, and you're, yeah, you, you can be something you know I want.
But I'm just saying, like, I just feel like it it deserves to be looked at. I understand that things can happen. But I also think that's the reason we have a stabilization fund. We have a capital stabilization fund. Uh, you know, for something, an outlier that happens, something like that, you know.
There are other backup mechanisms there.
And I just feel like, I mean, I, again, I I work in another town and their reserve fund is smaller than this one. So, uh, you know, it just, it just surprises me that we don't.
Is that really the case?
Wow. This is sort of very interesting. I mean, I mean, the the gamble goes either way, right? So you're, we're gambling that we might need two hundred fifty thousand dollars. But we're also gambling that two hundred fifty dollars is enough. You know, like, we don't know.
Many years ago, it was lower. And we increased it.
But I mean, like, I get nervous in other ways. I didn't, I I I did not, um, so I, my recommendation for free cash is to bring our total snow and ice budget up to four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. On average, the last five years, I think we spent about four hundred. So would that might be good, right? If you're just looking at that, it might be good. If it's not, you're gonna look down reserve. So like, it's, and and it's not snowing right now. You never know. So like, eh, it's a, it's a good argument, Justin. I I appreciate it every time. And I do look at it. I, it's pretty tempting. It's like
I think I think it's, it's especially for penny pinching, um, you know, depending on if we can really make an impact. I think it's a fair conversation to have, and I think it's legitimate, you know. Especially if another larger community is is.
But they might not, they may have other, I mean, like.
They may have other, other levers to pull to make sure they don't.
I think every town's different, but you know, but.
Might look at the one other community that's really kind of funding theirs as well.
It's tough to say. But it's a good point. So, um, I just want to go with all that on the board. I know it's easy, easy to solve it all.
I I do want to ask it, I guess, I guess, I'll just, you know, jump right in and ask why, um, what was the one point three three two override?
What was the one?
It says talks to the average, average, single family household tax bill if an override were appropriated.
Excuse me, that, that, thank you. I, uh, thank you for pointing that out. I should have made that clear. That's the difference between my budget recommendation and the school department's recommendation. So the school department requested a I can't remember what their percentage increase over. Thank you. I'm not recommending that much. So if if they, I don't have.
They were to go for an override for that.
Of of about one point three million dollars. For the context of discussion, I want to show how much money costs.
So, so on that, that that's little sheet, the total of fourteen ninety four. You know, tax bill increases. The three seventy six and the six seventy five are happening. They're in. And then the other two are still to be determined.
Yeah, that's right.
Can I ask one question now, Chris? Is the, is the sixty one dollar bleacher based on the three million dollar number?
Three million dollars. So you're right. I mean, so let's say it's three point one, three point two. But you don't bond for that in full amount because you don't really know what the contract is going to come out the end of the day for the bids. So you may actually only have to fall for it. But either way, it's not, it.
But either way, it's it's approximately sixty bucks a month. Sixty bucks a year for the, um, average, for the average single family house, which.
For fifteen years.
Average doesn't, isn't mean average is average.
And that's at a three point five percent. I mean, like, we we make a lot of assumptions.
Most people will see probably more higher increase than that. Yeah, but average isn't really average.
The other questions on the budget, Gregory?
Um, the eleven plus percent on the general government is that's largely wouldn't be fair to say from that centralizing of utilities expenses.
That's a great example, but yes.
Okay, but is that most of it or are we?
I would say, I can't say most because I'm not looking at the budget breakdown to that point. Statistically, the most, I would say, um, liability insurance is going up. Um, um, and the utility cost is high, you to to, those, you're right to bring that up. Energy costs are getting way up. So, um, I was conservative. I have to say in general, I tried to be, um, I don't know if impressive is the right term. But like, I made decisions when I was going down the budget. And like, I tried to, I tried to be you know, gamble where I could, gamble where I didn't think I should. Um, electricity is one of the things that keep up. Yeah.
We've had that conversation and we talked about these. Some point, there needs to be public education, some of it starts on Saturday and gets brought out from there, but that kind of nuance, I and maybe not just for that line, but overall for for what is really being captured in these increases. I'm wondering if the board wants to have now or some very soon point a conversation. And I think one way to do that public education or the recent prior presentations we just had are are important to understand where the detail behind these, but that's, so I'm not really speaking necessarily to a concern. I'm saying, well, I see this eleven point six three an increase. I know a bit about what it is because I've been sitting in meetings and and understanding and looking at the numbers and seeing how you really are being pulled from the departments, but a lot of people in town are to look at that and be like, eleven point six three, you gotta be kidding me. And so figuring out how to how to educate and make sure we we can communicate, you know, what these changes are as we advance to and present at town meeting is critical and becoming more critical by the year.
It's, I mean, it's, I mean, like, the one pager which you're referencing is, is, I mean, like, uh, there's a it's valuable because it's on one page, right? You can see the entire, if you read going down a budget one page. But it's not, it's not, to your point.
It it tells the story, but very few people read the one pager. If one of these things is broken down on slides at some point for a more, even more accessible, and that's more accessible, then even more details are going into the numbers itself.
So maybe that's, so what you're trying to say maybe is maybe that's something that Greg captures for the presentation on Saturday.
Yeah, that's absolutely one part. And then when it gets to town meeting, I think there needs to be how that presentation is captured and translated, because it's translated. And then also just to openly call it a gap for anybody to see if they have any other thoughts on on the change that could be differently this year.
You're absolutely right. And that's usually how it's portrayed. So like, you you'll get, you'll get one interpretation of the budget here. We'll see it different in the PowerPoint version on Saturday. And then especially if there's any change, you'll have to see that. But but it's kind of like broken down more and more and more by the time, I guess, the town meeting, it's like one slide, like we try to, they try to sort of like highlight the big numbers. Oh, and then the scripts that y'all read. So like, yeah, what they see and then what they hear.
All right. Anything else?
You reviewed the finance committee recently or is that upcoming?
That, so last meeting is canceled. It wasn't posted, um, and that's on on town hall's fault, but, um, I was invited and I was reserving for next Monday.
I do think that it's important for you to talk to us first because it is our budget. Um, so that would be my suggestion moving forward. But, um, because we hadn't had a chance to actually speak about it, right, in in public until tonight.
I mean, they invited me, so I, I didn't, that's, that's all, which is better. They invited me and.
No, I understand that, but you know, again, it's.
It's awkward to run up to it because I would love to have both have a chance to ask very questions in advance of the joint budget review, which is pretty relatively limited in terms of when we can have it relative to the the budget deadline. So.
That's how, you know, in the old days, when, when the budget, that Saturday meeting was the first time anybody saw the budget. And that generated the conversation about similar to what we're having here tonight on certain things. But then got into more detail with finance committee questions, et cetera. Um, like that conversation that Justine raised about the, um, the, um, yeah, the reserve fund would have, would have been a long conversation at one of those meetings and product. Because it would have generated more instead of just presentation and then oh, we're out of time, you know, that's.
So I I see your point, Steve, but I don't mind necessarily that then come, given everything's run up and a lot of major. There, I certainly like everybody having a few weeks to look at the budget relative to the first time being the day of the meeting. That's really okay. But, yeah, I the reason I was asking Greg is to see are there any major trends or any major unexpected questions or or kind of pushback from the finance committee would be interesting to know about in advance rather than next Monday or on Saturday, which doesn't seem.
We've got so much more time to the.
Next up. I guess, I think we're good. Is everyone good?
Did you exhale when you sent percent on your, on your budget?
Every year, every year, it's, I think about it so much throughout Christmas. All it, they, I always, yes. And then this year was even trickier because the annual company. So then, I, no, I don't like it.
Oh, it's the twenty first and first, it was in my head, it was a twenty.
Um, so Mr. Chair, uh, you had requested a couple of items be consistent of the agenda, uh, capital planning related, senior center, bleachers.
I didn't have the bleachers. I have the capital, the senior center, but the bleachers are there, I guess. But, um, the so the, the, um, senior center, made a senior center committee met, um, they elected their officers. Chair is Jerry Culver, the vice chair is Deborah So, and the clerk is Dan Shields. Committee is gonna meet the first and third, um, Wednesday of each month, so they'll, they'll follow us. Um, no, Thursdays, first and, first and third Thursdays, right? There's first and third Thursdays, so they'll be two days after us, um, each meeting, which some, some, in the minds of some is gonna create a problem, but I don't, I don't think so because it's real lag, getting information back to us at some point when it becomes important. But, um, and so right now, that that's scheduled, those are the officers. And, um, they are working to create a webpage and a document repository, depository in the FAQ section within the website to, um, answer anybody's questions and provide all the information, um, that the committee is using in a place where anybody in town that wants to see it, they can go look at it. And so in doing so, we requested all of the documentation from the senior center focus group, the council on aging, and the friends of Maine and seniors. Anything that they had in regards to, uh, prior, um, looks at facilities, ideas. Anything that they had in in regards to a, um, a new senior center, if they would kindly send it to the clerk of the, um, committee and he'll put it in a format that, um, anybody that's interested can go and access it online going forward. And then the next meeting is two days after our next meeting. I think that's it. Is that about it? I don't know who's gonna, I don't know who's gonna read it, look at it, but they're gonna have one. Okay, but, but yeah, so Jerry, Jerry's in charge now. Thank God. He enjoys it.
I I'm gonna speak publicly because I I bet on my feelings and I'll I'll reach out to Jerry independently, but I thought he has been a weak chair for the school committee. I thought, um, a lot of stakeholders felt responses and, one, I know that we were very frustrated not getting, uh, a lot of the feedback. We expected, uh, in the run up especially, uh, just a year ago, December, um, felt misinformed and after we had expressed grave concerns about hitting timeline, we even see Jerry appear for the meeting and send it to the committee. So I I don't like calling it out that way, but I worry that those same weaknesses could negatively impact our ability to um, have a a path forward for a senior center, which really values all the stakeholders and brings them together, um, and then communicates clearly and effectively. Uh, other challenges all noticed from the Green Meadow during that time where making sure minutes were posted, things like that. It took a lot of response back and forth. So some very easy areas for opportunities for improvement, but I I felt underserved by Jerry as the chair of the Green Meadow School Building Committee, and I I have to state that publicly.
I guess, I guess that that's fair, um. I don't know if all the criticisms are fair, because I don't know that he controls all of it, because the chair doesn't always control all of them, but certainly the next meeting is gonna be the Tuesday, Thursday after our next meeting. Certainly welcome to, um, go before the committee and make your feelings known to the committee.
I said my piece publicly, I'll reach out to Jerry and thank you.
I think that it's important to note that, yes, there were some problems in the beginning, um, and I was just as frustrated with a lot of things. But I feel like, um, one of the things, um, about it is is that Jerry has improved and the the Green Meadow Building Committee as a whole has improved and they have moved forward and they worked very hard to make sure that all the information is out there. And so it's like lessons learned. So yes, maybe, maybe he he admittedly, he was not as responsive early on. But what if again, he now, he knows the expectations, he knows the expectations of the board, and now he's in this role. So, um, moving forward, he can take those lessons learned and apply it to the senior center role.
And my comment would be, uh, I think the time to have expressed you know, and I, you leave it up to the committee to decide who they think their leader should be. And the dynamics of that particular committee, the time to express that concern Jeff probably should have been when Jerry was named as a potential member of a committee that you should have said that I will, you know, approve, or maybe you wouldn't have, but I would approve with the condition that, and at least then it's on the table, uh, you know, I my feeling is that when a committee is formed, they have the right to make that decision. The student will be their chair. And, uh, unless there's some egregious, uh, uh, you know, issue that goes on, uh, the committee goes forward.
That's fair, and I will note there's a difference in risk for an advisory committee versus a building committee. And so what I don't want to get into is assuming that this advisory be committed, then defaults into the building committee if that is the chair, and I want to make that very clear today from my opinion.
That's it. That's all I know about the senior committee, senior center committee right now. The next meeting is, like I said, two days after our next meeting, um. Did you want to talk about the field, the alumni field bleachers project?
I I think my recollection was one question, uh, a little confusion at the, uh, twenty meeting that ended day was, um, a little bit of uh, regarding the timeline. So I think, I think, um, the product presentation we got from the project manager or and or the designer was, um, the twenty eighth was the submission of of an article or some sort of like proposal to the select project vision. Where they're referencing is the annual kind of meeting timeline that our office put together. So in it, it says February twenty eighth is the deadline for some of the ball drop articles to the board, and that, and that's the timeline that is from the town miniature, that's on the chart, it's on the violence, it's like the date we came up with so that we could align it with like board meetings and finance communities, town council, yada, yada, yada. So that's just to kind of clear that, like, why they came up with the end of February, that's why. But, you know, as was kind of filled out, that's not ideal because they won't have the final cost estimations. They won't, you know, like, their levels of fairness or competence is is maybe not a hundred percent because, you know, they're just going based off the timeline they were given for the, for the submission form.
As far as you know, there hasn't been any, um, you, you know, my observation, at least this is me, has been, uh, and hearing, that's been an overwhelming negative response to the presentation that we had as well as to the cost, as well as to, I mean, I think, um, the questions that we asked that seemingly said, you need to have this stuff. As far as you know, regardless of that, they're still moving forward as is.
Uh, yes, I mean, like the, the I could, I could say corrected. I don't recall a direction from the board. Well, obviously, I'm more concerned about because I work for you rather than you, otherwise. Um, was to, like, we didn't knock the seats or knock the, you know, we had contacts.
Um, was to, like, we didn't knock the seats or knock the, you know, we had contacts, so we're just, we're continuing to.
So, so it's not the point, we though, because that's the thing, this is a school project, correct?
That's true, but I'm the chief, so.
So they haven't come to you to say, we want this, correct?
No, I I think you, so, and I, if you tell me that you would like me to. Um, negotiate the end of those contracts or those design firm and the product manager, I will, I will do that.
I guess the the question, you know, and I'm just, again, because there there is, and there's no representation. Other than, I think, you're on the committee and and Justin. But there's no, you know, representation from the town as far as, you you know, so. I think we kind of feel a little bit, personally, I'm not saying wait, I feel a little bit out of the loop as far as. How big of the project it's become and how we got to that, because I don't, because again, it, I mean, anybody's. It's not like they were regular, that we got regular updates, and maybe if I done a school committee meetings, maybe I would have gotten more regular updates, but. You know, are there, you know, are they considering, are they looking at towns, you know, of similar size that have? What size bleachers they have, like, I think that was, that was something that came up repeatedly was, you know, comparable towns with comparable. Populations, what are their sizes, because even if it means cutting down. Two bathrooms, it's a cost savings, you know, or, um, I think that it really felt. The other night that, you know, I and I I spoke to this. When we first talked about this, um. I talked about scope creep and how I was really afraid that that was gonna happen. And I really feel like that's where we're at, so it's, oh, what we can get, it would obviously a press box, I one hundred percent support. W A B M and the cap at seventy four program, but I also don't think they need. The top of the line, best of the best, all at once either, I think that you build. Things and you you build the program as you're, you know, as you're creating, so. Um, so it concerns me, it concerned me the other night when. You know, Chris Hunter said that the electrical load, the electric costs wouldn't go up, because we're replacing the LEDs, but we weren't replacing the LEDs. And then the electric cost won't go up because, but yet, we're gonna have a heated building that we have to heat, so. You know, there there's all these unknowns, who's gonna clean the bathrooms, who who's gonna maintain this this structure? Um, that now exists. Uh, and and I just feel like those are the things that that we just. I'm not comfortable moving it forward just because I don't understand it, and I can't, I can't. Accurately tell residents. About it, I guess.
I will, I will say to the the point David made, that I've heard more negative comments about the, um, the creep. In the cost of the bleachers than anything that I've heard negative comments about in a very, very long time. Um, and and, you know, you can try and explain to people that, you know, when you build a a set of bleachers with six hundred seats. You need this many men's rooms and this many ladies. When you build, you know, five hundred, you need less, but here's what the numbers are. I think, I think that, you know, I I don't know who's gonna explain it to people and how that's gonna be. They put out there, but I think that, um, that the term, you know, uh, creep. Came out, and I think that there's a lot of people that were blown away by that, by that number with a three in front of it. Because that was not anything that any of us have really ever heard before. And I think that's a, I think that's a problem for this proposal and this project, and then when you go back to, um. Your fourth, um, you know. Your fourth slide here, the F Y twenty five, uh, tax, tax bill impact statements. It doesn't, it doesn't paint a pretty picture with with some of the other, uh, things that it goes that affecting. You know, homeowners' annual expenses immediately, so I I don't know what that means for. For that, but I think we need to, you know, there's some questions. About all that stuff.
One of the questions that came up actually before I get, that I thought of, um, after my meeting, um. Is whether or not there is any, um. Statute, I know that there was the statute about the number of bathrooms you acquired and everything else. Is there any requirement as to the proximity of those bathrooms?
Yeah.
Yes, ADA, that's an ADA requirement.
What is the proximity requirement?
What?
Three hundred feet?
Three hundred feet.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's.
Can't be the high school.
Yeah, there's, there was some questions about some different stuff, but, I mean, that. You know, the the fact that the the bats, you can't have the bleachers below new new facilities, and the facilities have to be there.
Um. And then, but then when you hear people say that they go to other towns, uh, and I hear, uh. Nishova and, um, and Littleton, the most commonly, uh, referred to towns. And they have larger bleachers than what are proposed for what we are asking for. Yet, they are told there's two. Uh, gender neutral bathrooms at the locations, two, not seven of each, and, um. I wonder, the reason I raised, uh, proximity is I wonder if at Nishova they get away by having two right there. But their school is close by. Uh, school is essentially right behind the bleachers at Nishova, I don't know about Littleton.
I wonder, I wonder what, um. What the timeframe, how the timeframe where the bleachers being built plays into it, because it could be, it could be a grandfather situation where. These new regulations came into effect after they were built, because there are, I mean, there are some. Places where you go, we where you get a. You got a real good hike tour, a men's or a woman's room at some of these high schools, but they're older and they're, you know, they're bigger and they. Clearly have fewer, um, rest facilities, but in there further distance away, so I don't know. When those, um, regulations came into play that we're now, you know, forced to, um, adhere to, but. It didn't sound like, it it didn't sound like, you know, there's any relief from those things, just because you don't wanna spend the money. Or you don't feel, you know, that the five of us and some angry residents don't feel that there's a need for that many number of bathrooms, I. I don't know what the science is, it says there is, but.
I'm wondering if we had decided just to repair, if we would have been helping the same standard.
No, so the repairs would have been, my opinion is, the purchase would have been significant to surpass the threshold for, um. The architectural board requirements.
Right, I think that's the same mechanism as they were with the Green Meadow.
Correct, so it would require nearly. Um, uh, it can be done in the first place, or whatever. I, it was. Well, I think the task was to, you know. Figure out a replacement to the alumni bleachers, I think unbeknownst to those of, even myself, that when I was doing the planning, you know, having. How much did bleachers cost? And like, we threw out the numbers based on on what we knew, which was enough to trip that we knew what procurement threshold was getting. Oh, but that was maybe a year or two ago, and and then the cost of materials and demand wanted to increase, and that's inevitable. And which would be also, I I know the board does this, that would also make a consideration if you if you postpone or otherwise. This current proposal, the expectation, I think, would be known that costs will continue to rise. So, if, I I'm not trying to tell the board how to think, I'm just trying to put some context here, and then, um. But this this field task force is working towards that, they they want new bleachers. Okay, well, that also would require certain bathroom facilities with this certain community and ADA requirements, etc. And I, and I think this has just been sort of, although, I don't see it as as creep. I really do see it as a thorough understanding of the size of what is required to replace some alumni bleachers, and I think the alternative is. I actually, I don't know, I mean, the alternative could be, you, we continue to rely on rentals.
Well, one of the correspondences we got pointed out that we could fund rentals for a hundred years, literally. At the price that we're paying now, literally one hundred years of rental would be three point one million dollars.
We would be paying, you don't pay three million dollars. Three million dollars is the cost of buying a fifteen.
Right, but I mean, and I, I understand and I respect that some of it is. You know, a result of of code upgrade, and. Honestly, it is the cornerstone of that area, we want it to look nice, we want it to be professional, absolutely. But like I had said, what like I asked, um, last week, was, you know. I was hoping someone would go into it with a budget in mind. Of, we're not, okay, so, all right, you know what, we're over two point five, what can we scale back on? What can we, because, because if you.
Like what we do with our house projects.
Exactly, but it's like if you don't, you know, because, because if not. You know, you're really doing the residents a disservice by not giving them those options, by sitting there going. Yeah, you know what, we can do this, and then, I, because I think, again, I think that's something that I had suggested. Back when this whole thing happened, was can we do it in phases? Can we do, you know, and I understand part of it has to be all done at once, but then, you know. There are add-ons that that maybe something can wait a year or two, or something like that, can that could be phased in. And, you know, I just don't see that any of that has been asked, and maybe it has, and and I just haven't heard. You know, because again, I haven't gone to the the meetings, so.
The only, the only, the only question I would have about that, that thought with, you know, phases, stages, is what? What does that cost us in, um, in increases in building costs and and, um, equipment? And and, um, equip, you know, equipment parts that, if you say if you wanted to wait a year to put the, um. Press box out or 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 anything, wh- when you wait, what does that do to the cost of that in the press box, is it? Is it a ten percent increase, is it, is it more, is it less? Is it, um, something that, you know, they can easily add on, or is it something that should be, um. Done when it's created, so it's integrated into the the structure at that time? My other questions, I don't know the answer to, but I don't know if they've been asked either, but I don't, I don't know that that. Saves us anything.
So for, for me, I think when, you know, we. Asked what were the comparable towns was looked at, and the one that was mentioned, and I know there's a list of others, but the one that was mentioned has a current enrollment that's. Uh, almost four times its whole height is Maynard High School. And it's hard to go to town meeting and justify those bleachers, and that's the one comp, and we've been other comps out there, but I think that. A lot of those comps were in the twice the range of our high schools, so it's still very, you know, not comparable to Maynard and. That, that to me suggests that they weren't ready for the meeting with the select board, um. That we just had, if that's your one comp, and you don't have a narrative about how you started that from the beginning. And I look at this timeline in the run up to this town meeting, and you got planning board coming up at the end of February, you've got, you know. Design that has not happened yet, you got cost estimate that's happening right up to the deadline, and I, my question is, why are we trying to force this? Because this feels like some of the challenges, not picking up the Green Meadow conversation again, but we had that December, where we actually were up against. An artificial, not an artificial, but a a timeline against, um, the N S B A timeline, but this time that's not the case. So why are we pushing ourselves if we don't have some of these, you know, fundamental questions kind of worked out yet on this? Timeline rushing in towards, um. Spring meeting, and then, yes, the cost will go up, but also it gives people a little bit of breathing room from this giant spike that we are going to have. Uh, in terms of overlap with the, um, Green Meadows School as well, uh, now, of course, there's other things that we know are coming down the pipe, but, um. You know, I I just don't see the run for spring town meeting if there's still a fair amount of questions. But I know they said the planning board is gonna go well, but I think they thought our meeting was gonna go well too, and there's certain reasons and pushback for there, so I'm not. Not convinced, not trying to look at the back of the room here anymore.
Yeah.
So, what's that? I didn't ask, not, uh. But I will note that, um, we are engaging peer review.
Yes.
Which encourages a cost, and any additional design changes that come later on will. May have to trigger a re-peer, another peer review. So something that maybe Kirk Johnson will, you know, make sure they.
So, so to that end, I'm sorry, and I know, I know you're not here.
I'm good with this, I'm here to make sure.
Um, but if, so I know that, I think that I, uh, understand that they submitted, so. For example, the press box was a larger press box than they think they anticipate possibly. Because they said that it's easier to scale down than it is to scale up, so when you go through all the approvals from from planning board. They can scale down, but it, but it's harder to scale up, if they scale down, will they have to go back through the peer review process for that?
Um, I think, I heard that comment as well, because I watched the video.
Yeah.
And I think. I think that applies for permitting in a sense, um. Any, any modifications to a site plan, though, will need to go back to planning board. At the very least, the chair of the planning board would need to make a determination if it's a major or minor change to play plan.
Okay.
Or offer a hearing or offer a meeting to discuss whether it's major or minor. So, there's something the buyer and station has done that I've determined are just very minor, and it doesn't need to go any further than that, make the determination. Sometimes, I'll make the determination, or the chair will make the determination that it could go to open board for it, if that.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes it'll actually have to open up a hearing or a law.
Okay, all right.
So those are the kind of tiers.
Yeah.
I can't say until you get there.
Until it happens, right. Okay.
I can always give examples of what hasn't happened.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
This could be back, okay.
Um.
Just one comment, I mean, I've listened a lot here, and and I concur with a lot of the opinions that have been expressed here. My biggest concern, as has already been expressed, is the the degree of uncertainty about so many aspects of the project. And, uh, you know, whether that can be resolved in in the next few weeks, we're meant to be seen, but. For me, with this, this amount of money at stake and. Uh, we know it's gonna be troubling to communicate to, uh. You know, a huge part of the town population, and I just feel like that uncertainty is gonna work against it.
Well, uh, I would remind the board that if it's presented, if the. If an article comes through us, we can say no. And reject the article from appearing on town meeting vote, so it's our ultimate decision. And if we don't feel that it's ready, we should probably tell them now, so that. You know, because I don't think three weeks from now, we're gonna feel any differently, because we've got a list of questions and, uh, concerns about.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not that comfortable not sending it to the voters, but, um. But I'm not, uh. I don't, we haven't done that yet, have we?
In three weeks, it's just a submission to our office, it doesn't, like, it's, that's not the board, I. I I already answered the tab, but like, I don't, I don't remember when y'all blessed the warrant, so whether or not you blew it on the warrant, it's a need for.
Well, no, so, but that's my, that's my question, David, I mean, because I don't think since I've been here that we've said, you know, we're not gonna allow this on the warrant, so.
But generally, I don't even like things coming to y'all if I think it's not worth your time, I mean, like, we try to, we try to, like, have these conversations, but now.
Yeah, but we haven't pulled out, it was just because we didn't like it.
That's true, there there's been some.
We pulled, this would be pulled because it's not prepared.
Well, right, but, but we haven't, we have never pulled anything for. Well, it it's, I guess, I guess the presenting body, who's gonna present it, they they think it's prepared. We don't have to agree with that, I guess.
And override requires us.
Well, the 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 other.
Dead exclusion, I should say, sir.
The other part of that is that, um, again, so I, you just said that it's. You know, about April-ish is when we need to have it on a warrant. When do mail-in ballots have to be printed, because if we're gonna do, if we're gonna put that on the ballot. For the beginning of May, that, you know, right there, that's something that.
When do we need, what level of cost estimate for this to rival the ballot?
No, ballot doesn't have a point line.
Oh, sorry, it's two, in the same question, town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, fair enough, these are all good points, I don't have to do these. But, but, um. I'm sorry, but I think these are all good points, and it, and and whether or not we can put on the warrant, maybe you can see. I think, I think my expectation was the school committee was going to be sponsoring this article.
And then we have to accept.
Well, so.
No, no, the dead exclusion.
Or dead exclusion, you're right, yeah.
But generally, optics wise, if nothing else, you kind of want everyone on stage to give us a page, so if, if, like, you know, I like. Passive vision town meetings, and I definitely, it's not good to put things in front of the voters, that like, people who are, who they've elected are not sure about it. So like, usually, if we're not, we collectively are not sure about an article, probably not best.
All right, so, that being said. If it didn't get placed on the ballot. You know, except that the item wasn't accepted by this board, um, can you find out what that? What what that, what that cost would, what that, what that would do to the cost of, uh, Colly's and Hunter's.
I made these notes, so, so, um, good question, so Natasha, do you have a question?
Comments?
Uh, just a question, actually, because I, the school committee had.
Uh, just a question, actually, because I, the school committee hasn't met as a as a board after the the meeting last time to discuss the feedback as well. But I would be, I would wonder also, um which in a lot of this is something that we anticipate talking about on Thursday. Um, timing as well, um but the cost for additional rental contracts, all of that, I think. From my understanding, the funding source is going to be depleted soon, and I don't know if we can get more information, maybe that might help. Conversations as well, because I think the rent, the 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 cash, uh free cash. Uh amount that was being used for rental was, so if there's goes into, let's say, the fall, for instance, again, or. The spring, um what is that, what is that plan or what does that look like?
Inco- including in included in my capital, um recommendations was, I think, fifty thousand dollars towards um more bleacher rentals for the next. Academic year, um and so if the new, but that was under the one assumption that 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 there would be a new year, new bleachers were built. And so if you just extend that to when new bleachers are built and you're not reliant on rentals, then I would presume another fifty thousand dollars for every.
But we're we're essentially would be covered for this coming.
If if tell me, if this is not worth, tell me to pass my recommendation.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what the timeframe to build instead of bleachers and all that stuff is either, so.
Right, so that so that that covers at least that one thing, but those are great questions like Chris pointed out, there are other costs. We we um for the fire station, we had plans in hand, but not stamped or somewhere. And then, but it took us like another year or two till we actually went to the book.
Okay.
And so there wasn't assumed escalation cost, but I'm just saying, like, there's some, there's some strategic patients that could, that could apply here as well. Um, so those are questions I want to go back to the team and just say later.
I like strategic, I like I like that line, strategic, what do you say, what?
Patience.
Strategic patient, much better than creep.
I used to, I used to different.
And I I just wanted to also just add that the the those numbers were very startling, I think, for all of us when we got them, January seventeen, so they're pretty raw. For everybody to see as well, the three, three plus million, um they would still go up to bid. Like, I don't think that that was just what Huntress is looking at from their knowledge, but anything that any project would still have to go out to bid. Um, for construction, um their numbers are based on what they're looking at in the designs. So I don't know if that was really.
Town has a three million dollar override, it's been approved, uh the bid to come in right around there.
You're not gonna, they're not gonna, they're not gonna submit something much cheaper, that's for sure.
I don't, yeah, I don't disagree, but I just wanted to clarify, like, it's not like that, and that's it, that there would still be a project that goes out to bid. We only did have two um design firms that came back and returned, so I don't know how many people would also. Once it does go out to bid, um, apply for it, so anyway, I just wanted to add that, thank you.
All right, any anything else on the bleachers? Um, Green Meadow School Building Project, um, kind of quiet period, there is a statement on the on the agenda, um that's.
Was that, was that the seven million from like the fall that they talked about or was it another seven?
Are you saying seven million?
Seven million, yes.
I'm sorry about.
If it was the statement from Green Meadow, they, so they talked about that um they finalized. Like a a rebate or something with.
Yeah, MSBA.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'm reading the message, which I thought Chris was.
I was just reading this one message.
Did you know what, so if there's not, if there's not a little.
It's okay.
If there's not a little um piece of paper next to it, I just assume there's nothing in it, so I don't open it, so I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. So Chris was referring to just the call of notice that. Are you referring to the the difference between the MSBA agreement and then the amended project funding agreement?
They just put something out Tuesday, um Mayor Public School did, so. It it might be that, because I was just, I was selfishly hoping that there was more.
No, I think I think it just references that and then the the um the scramble to get it signed and return to the MSBA. So again, that was amended, which is too hard to the to the quite good for us.
Yeah, and so it's um, but that's really, it's been, other than that, it's been, well, there haven't been any meetings or anything yet, so. Um, it's that. Uh, correspondences, would anybody like to make a make a motion about correspondences A through F?
Uh, I'll move to accept and approve correspondences A through F if you're down.
Second.
All right, um any conversation about any of the items in the correspondence this week? No, all right, um all those in favor? Right, correspondence, all done.
Thank you to Sid for his time on Fire Station.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Moving away.
It's, I mean, it's, there's some guys that have been on that for a while. With with dwindling.
We could probably discharge it, well, I think when the venue is done.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we have um one set of minutes to approve, do you mean?
Did we get a second one added or is that this one?
Not the sixteen, yeah.
I have to finish checking out the notes for that meeting.
Didn't we get something late in the afternoon, here's here's some uh.
Oh, you did, you did, you did, so you didn't get this one on Friday, because I was off, so I didn't get a chance to edit, uh.
So January sixteenth.
That's right.
All right.
I read.
Okay.
I will move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of January sixteen twenty twenty four, ad shop.
All in favor? Thank you. Now, we have the wonderful town administration report this week.
Thank you, Mr. Perry, I'll be brief, um, Washington's birthday is the state recognized holiday and that's Monday.
President's Day.
Yeah, it's it's Washington's birthday and of the state secretary states.
Really?
Yeah. So that's, that's the thing, and then um, um, just a reminder, in public, um, AM town reports submitting for due to my manager Greg Wilson. On Friday, who who amongst you is doing the select board town report, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yeah. Let me, let me a couple, would you, let me a couple of of recent ones, so I can take a look and kind of um know where I'm going with it. Friday.
Just Friday. Just in the running, because. Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, yeah, I did too much. Yeah, picked up the key events on the agendas.
And then put them in categories and then roll.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
For you.
All right.
I just want to also highlight um PBW Justin Marco's note in the town administration report that there's a new water customer portal on the town website, which I thought would be.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's good for, and then um, I also want to take the time to highlight the great work that the public works in, so the water guys did on Summer Street. When they had the the watering. Not a great Sunday for those guys, but uh they were responsive, they were out there.
Risen cold, raining or snowing or something.
How did that affect plow operations? Because you you probably, I was going to say, you lost, you lost drivers.
Yeah.
May I just ask a technical question on that particular water main break? In the photographs, it looks like it's really deep, how did you learn about it?
Also, even when they're that deep, so not every leak will pop up, a majority of them will actually find, sorry. Just a doctor alone um found it way off of that, that way, we do just.
It did, it did appear above.
Yeah, yeah, visually, and then it's called into the police department, then that they defend our staff and confirm, but just for educational purposes, one or two. Be aware that we actually did that, focus on it, we detect them two to three times a year.
Yeah, I know you do that, yeah.
When you have main leaks like that, they find, they find.
They found their way up.
Yeah, that rock is pushed.
Because we don't know how long that might have been leaking.
Um, no, we actually just conduct, so we are, we play a razor-thin line with our ability to provide water. So we conduct our leak detection more readily than most communities or utilities. We actually just recently conducted a um leak detection about a month ago, there was not.
How old was that particular pipe?
Um, so actually, Tom, three um is all about this I bring in, how is it in the eighty? Which actually for us.
It's just, it's just a kid. Um, what else, anything else, Greg?
Well, I I just have one question about the the water main break, um is the just the fact that this one happened, um statistically? Does that increase the likelihood of further leaks in that stretch? Part of a pattern?
While the pattern is actually weather, so it's very consistent to receive or have water main breaks, most communities deal with this. During the winter months, frosts, non-frost, so the ground moves. So we prefer in industry to have a hard frost and last throughout the winter. When we have these up and down patterns and weather patterns, you actually could make a correlation, this could increase over time, we're not seeing a deeper frost. And we're having consistent breeze thaw throughout winter, which is not uncommon. So we gear up this time of year to know that it's a possibility, that's why we actually just conducted leak detection a month ago. To try to pre-identify any areas that may be major. Um, so it's not uncommon to see water main breaks in the middle of the or the beginning.
Okay.
Um, I I do want to point out, and the chief, fire chief is already thinking of, but you know, I like that she pointed out that firefighters being out in Portis did. Get their pro board certification, fire on to one, and that Dee herself and firefighter gross got higher permission off the one, that's that's great work. And then um, oh, on the other side, so um Chief Noble had pointed out that there was two other officers that got event degrees. That is specifically Deputy Chief Droughto and um, uh, Sarge, they both got their master's degrees, uh, and have. Nice and stuck, yeah, right, they did it, and then um.
Does their contract um include, yeah, like the educated one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, but it's great, I think we have a very, well, we have an expert where it's uh for both fire people. And then um, of course, I encourage the town to look at the draft hazard mitigation plan, which has been provided to the slide board. Administers, like affecting websites, archives, convenience, etc. Um, we'll basically look at that and then um that would be coming to the board and if you predict.
Okay. I have to move the select board goal to the next meeting, because I don't want to be here till tomorrow. Um, you know, but um, I don't know, cheer report, I only, I just. I really nothing, um, other than what we talked about um earlier when um. Julian, you know, asked her questions, I think we'll go with that, but um, the other question, we were talking about it, because someone asked this thing about it. Or posted something about the bagel place.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
A week, a week.
Have you heard something about the bagels?
No, no, other than what the gentleman came and told us, that he was waiting for his knee to be healed and everything. So allegedly, allegedly, his knee is all better, and somebody says, oh, we're waiting for the town to inspect. He did not say that, you know, some, somebody else said that, so I don't, I don't know where that's at.
We're just wondering if.
It's kind of, can we just kind of throw that bike?
Facebook lore, so we're just trying to make, because it definitely ends up having.
All the timelines we hear about, Chris remembered the one from November about somebody's surgery to open up a a bagel.
Because because we haven't had many people come in here and talk with us, and for whatever reason, particular piece of business. Is more people are interested in the bagels than the budget, the bleachers and all the rest of the beans combined. But more people, more people ask me about the the bagel store than anything else. But I, but it would be nice to know, but I could, because I, you know, I always had the impression after the conversation we had and anything else. Who was good to go when he was just waiting for a surgery?
Yeah, someone, so someone mentioned that they had spoken to him and that he said he was waiting on the town. So, uh, you know, sometimes that means different things, so I just want to make sure that that we're, you know, whatever.
Um, I don't, I don't have anything else other than that, just one question that popped up when we were talking. Um, member reports, um Jeff?
Uh, just one thing, I had the pleasure of going to the ice sculpting event, the cultural district held, a good crowd was there. They brewed from uh as our, uh, the chosen the touch operation, the local um. Either one was delicious, it was fun to watch them form, uh, just a lot of people showed up, a nice, especially for a winter day, um.
It's a nice day, too.
It was a, yeah, it was a perfect, still a little bit cold, but a little bit of both freezing, so it wasn't, you know, too frigid out there.
And that's still red.
And I think that was a perfect gift of the major business line. Collaboration as well.
Um, just me?
Um, not that good.
Excuse me?
I said, I know, I know.
Uh, just something, I quickly popped into the wondering Saturday and um, to, it was, it was crowded as it always is. And to my surprise, there was an event going on in there for the Lunar New Year, which was really impressive. It was um, now I popped in, I looked around, I walked around and let them alone. Um, but a lot of young families, a lot of uh young kids dressed up, and I didn't even know what was going on. And so somehow the word had gotten out and, but it looked really, really cool, so um. Congratulations to whoever organized it.
You're not visiting the children's section as much as you used to?
I don't know, I, I actually, that day I sat up on the uh newspaper, that doesn't sound good, you know.
They have a children's section.
But there are always great events, I mean, like you see in the town officials, like the old, it's great, great.
Stephen? Uh, just one addition to Jeff's comment about the ice sculpture, uh, was a great event. And the one area which I think if something like that comes up again is just the decision about street closure. Um, I think in the event, and I'm not trying to blame any second guessing here, but um. In the event, it didn't appear to be necessary, um, so I think, you know, the next time something comes up like that, um. Just to to review that, because I suspect it's, it is a burden for people on the street.
You'd say it wasn't necessary to close the street, or you know, or or it's it's worth reevaluating whether it.
Yes, exactly, yeah, I mean, given that it was the first event of this nature and they had no idea how many people. So I I totally understand why the decision was made as it was.
I wonder if.
A concern.
I wonder if um either Chief Wallace or Chief Noble had any say in and whether that should place on a. Don't ever. Due to safety, any safety concerns with, you know, however they do it. I think, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Many more people started tree lighting during dark, it's both a day without closing trees.
Right. Okay, um, my next meeting is coming up on February. Maybe February twenty.
Uh, the the tent is very busy, regular ones.
Oh, yeah, the, yeah, the next regular meeting is twenty what, twenty fourth?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay, um, so we see everybody Saturday and um, when anybody like to make a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody, have a great night.